Hey, how are you?
Hi, Eric. How are you?
I'm doing all right. It's been a while.
I know. Two this week, though.
Oh, there's some for one sec, huh?
Well, actually, no, you don't have to be there because it's just the, um, there's no applications. It's just historic.
Okay. Sounds riveting. So if you want me to be there, I'll be there, but it's okay.
Actually, if I could phone myself in, I would do.
That's all marked down that, uh, that you don't need us.
Be taking notes, that's all.
Well, this should be a fun one tonight.
Yes.
I don't like this blur.
Switched computers at the last minute. Just now I was about to sign on. My computer decided to update.
Oh.
So I'm like, what the heck?
I've had that. I've had that happen to me too. And I'm like, oh, I hope it finishes before.
Yeah, I don't know.
Nobody's here.
No. I'm like, okay, I know I sent the right credentials. Where is everybody?
Well, I got them. So if I have them, then.
Seriously. Oh, Craig's here.
You know, to start.
That feedback, just me or does anyone else hear it?
Yeah, I'm getting it as well.
There it goes.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Craig. Hey, folks.
Do we hear from Joe at all, or?
I haven't heard from him. I will only now he asked for a copy of the roster. We email, but I haven't heard from him about tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see him in the participants.
Hey, everyone.
Drew and Jessica.
Hey, how are you?
Great. How about yourself?
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Rob.
Up there, Jessica.
This year's.
Okay.
Hi.
Hey, Jessica.
That's everyone except Jones.
Give it like one more minute here. See if he logs in. I also need to see.
Seven, eight.
I don't see anyone from the high center either. And I want to flip this.
I had spoke to my.
They do know that they're going second. So.
They do. Okay, that was my biggest concern. All right. So Mike knows that he's going number two there. All right, good.
Yeah, I told.
Well, fine, then we'll, um, we'll go that way. All right, give it two seconds and see if Joe shows up. Otherwise, we'll get wrong here. Actually, you know what? We'll, uh, we'll get going and then see if he's here by the first application. So. Go ahead.
In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the board in town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates, indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, September 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM via Zoom webinar. Amy Lawrence. Jody Sharma.
Here. Here.
Steve Togar.
Here.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Here.
Shandru Hargani.
Here.
Ashley Abigdor.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman Jessica Blatt.
Here.
Chairman Craig Platter.
Here.
Okay, folks, we do have, I think, one set of minutes.
Yes.
To approve as of August 15th. Who is eligible on those?
Eligible are Amy, Steve, Wolfgang, Shandru, and Jessica.
Okay, um, do I have any corrections, changes on, on those? Then can I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Move approval, seven minutes.
In a second. Those eligible are in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Next, we have one memorialization calendar 387722. Raul Mamede and Priyanka Sastri at 24 Canterbury Lane in Short Hills, who's available to, to vote on that.
Amy, Jody, Steve, Wolfgang, Shandru, Jessica, Craig.
Okay, um, any changes, corrections to that memorialization? I hear none. Then in that case, can I have a motion to adopt that memorialization?
I move approval.
Thank you, Annie, in a second.
Second.
Okay.
Amy Lawrence.
Yes.
Jody Sharma.
Yes.
Steve Togar.
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus.
Yes.
Shandru Hargani.
Yes.
Jessica Blatt.
Yes.
Craig Platter.
Yes. So, um, for those of you that are in the public tonight, we are going to hear our calendar 388122 first. That is a property location at 10 Warre Road, Jose Lindoro. And then we will be going to calendar 3822, which is the property located at 4037 439 Milburn Avenue. And we will spend the rest of the evening on that or however long it takes to go through their testimony. So if you're here this evening on the, um, the high center matter, though, that is going second. So we're going to bring over John James and I think Jose, I guess, might be the applicant. I don't see anyone with the last name, so.
Jose should be here as well.
Yeah, I see him on there.
For some reason, it's taken. Should be coming over. Should be coming over.
There we go.
Okay.
Good evening, Ms. Lindar. How are you today?
Good evening. I'm sorry for the delay. I'm not very good at the Zoom.
No problem. Hopefully, we'll be going back live very shortly, so. I'm gonna get this whole Zoom thing.
He asked me if I was gonna join as as an attendee or as a panelist, so I didn't know. So I say panelist, and I guess got me through it. So. So, good evening, everyone. Hopefully, you can hear me well.
Yes, absolutely. Will you be speaking this evening? Because we'll swear you in real quick. Okay, good, so.
I'm here by.
Why don't we swear, everybody? Can we just raise your hand also, Jose, please? You're right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give in tonight's proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we just get your name and your address for the record?
My name is Jose Landaro, and I live at 10 Raway Road, Milburn, New Jersey, 0041.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I had my hand up as well. John James, architect, Leavenin Wood Place, Maplewood, New Jersey.
Great, thank you. So who would like to start first?
I think Jose is just gonna start, and then I'll take you through all the drawings.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Lindar.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Landaros. I just said it. I'm here with my wife. We I live here with my family since 2010. We are a family of five, have a daughter, and she graduated from Milburn High School, and she's now a registered nurse. Then I have two sons. They both are attending public schools in Milburn. Jose, who is in ninth grade on Milburn High School, and Daniel, who is at the middle school on sixth grade. So like I just said, we live here for about over a decade now, and our family has grown, our kids have grown. We are in their need of a space at home, so we saw the services of Mr. James to prepare a package for us to do an extension on the second floor to add a room, because we really need the space. We do see that in my area and this area, a number of houses have applied for extension of houses. Some of my neighbors have done it. So, given the current states of the housing market, we decided that we would prefer to do an extension of our house because of the space that we need. That's pretty much, you know, my my statement, you know, like, we live here for a family and in this house for about 12 years. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. James, will you be going from here?
Yes, I can.
Why don't you give us your qualifications real quick?
Okay. I'm an architect registered in New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. I have a bachelor of architecture from University of Virginia and a master's from Columbia University in New York. Principal in a seven-person architecture and interior design firm in Maplewood, New Jersey. I've had my firm here almost 30 years. I presented before numerous boards in New Jersey, approximately 50 different ones, and in front of this board on numerous occasions. And all my licenses are current and in order.
Thanks very much. All qualifications are accepted, so please proceed.
Great, thank you. I'm going to share my screen here. And. Can everyone see that now?
Yes.
And John, as you go through your testimony, to the extent that there's any documentation that you're presenting to the board in support of your application that has not been filed yet with the board, please indicate so.
Okay, tonight, I'm only going to be presenting the drawings that have already been submitted and the photographs that were submitted and put up online as well.
Thank you.
So we will be in conformance with everything that's already submitted. We're here tonight because the Landaros want to do a second floor master suite addition, a lower suite on their house in Milburn on Raway Road. And it's gonna require two variants reliefs. The first one is for a second floor expansion to encroach into an allowable side yard. And we need an encroachment of 2.08 feet. And it's only for a very minimal portion of the building. I'm gonna show you that. We tried to mitigate that, but cannot eliminate that. The second one is for a minor increase in floor area ratio of 1.75% or 183 square feet. In this case, the hardship for this property is that we have an existing non-conforming lot. It's only 50 feet wide. Where in the R6 district, the minimum required width is 60 feet wide, so we have a substandard lot in terms of the lot width. And the existing house on the property that you can see here in my drawing also, you can see that the house doesn't fit within the side yard setbacks for the property. So on the right side, there's a setback of approximately 8.46 feet, and on the left side, I think it's 9.4. And you can see the red lines of what we need to have. So we have a case where the house is right at the side yard setbacks are over. And we have a case where in the R6 zone, when you go above 18 feet, there's a slope plane that you have to meet for the project. And in this case, we need a minor variation from that. The other thing is that with this narrow lot, the only place that we're able to add on is really in the back of the house. We have an existing family room here. I'll show you that. The existing basement is staying the same as it currently is. There's a playroom and a garage, and a storage mechanical room downstairs. First floor is remaining as is with a living room, dining room, kitchen, and a family room, and a deck off back. The family room takes up maybe 60% of the width of the house, and the deck takes up the other 40% of the width. So on the second floor, we're proposing to add directly on top of that family room to do a new master bedroom with a bathroom and a closet. It's an existing three-bedroom house. You can see right here, there's an existing owner's bedroom here. The new bedroom that we're doing is slightly larger than that. This one's about 12 foot three. And we're going to 13 foot three where the bay window is, but the rest of the room is only 11 foot three. And this one is about 16 foot three deep, and we're going two foot two feet further. We're going to 18 foot five inches here. Instead of doing a full width all the way out, we just did a smaller bay window in the middle to allow a sample room around the bed. Create a master bathroom here and create a master closet here. We kind of minimize the circulation in the space. You're coming right through the hallway from the existing hallway directly into the master suite. So it's really the minimal addition that we could do. And it's set squarely on top of the existing family room below. You can see on the front of the house. It's remaining as is. We are also adding a four-foot portico on the front, just so that there's a covering to the entry. Currently, there's an entablature that's flat against the existing brick, and we're going to be moving that out four feet. That doesn't require variance, because an existing house can do a portico of four feet on the front, so we're gonna do a conforming portico there. We're going to remove a couple of the pilasters on the brick to improve the appearance, and, you know, repaint and trim it. On the back of the house here, you can see the dotted line shows where the existing one-story family room is. This is located above the garage, and we're proposing to add directly above that, adding continue the bay window up for a second floor windows in the master and doing a new sloped roof here. Our, the height of the new addition from the ground floor of the basement is 31.31 feet 8 inches, so it's under the 32-foot height requirement. We're also setting the the gables down below the existing gutter line on the house, so it will be a little bit lower. And we're sloping the roof facing our next-door neighbors away, so that the roof is high in the middle, and it's lowest at the side of the neighbors. You'll notice this small triangle right here in the corner of the drawing. This is the area that we need a side yard setback for. It's approximately two feet wide, and it's about four feet high, and that's the triangle where we're encroaching into the setback with the slope plane for this project. Above that, it's all conforming. Below this, it's all conforming. This is this one little area, and it seemed crazy to kind of take a dent out of the side of the house for this. But it is a two-foot setback at this one point, at the maximum point of it. You can see on the side of the house, we've set the roof down below the gable roof of the house, so there's just a little bit lower in that bedroom. You can see we have the addition somewhat shortened with the bay sticking off of it. And we did that to kind of open up the house at the corners and for the neighbors as well. You can see on the opposite side where the deck is, the same thing, the addition extends out, and there's this two-foot bay window there that provides additional space in both the family room and in the master bedroom above. Photos for the house, this kind of shows you the photo of the house adjacent to the two neighbors. In most cases here, here's the photo of the house from back. You can see there is a shared driveway between two houses that's completely paved. Both of the owners drive down and park in their respective garages on both sides. This one still only has a one-story addition. You can see here what's more typical, which is a two-story addition going back for shared driveways on the front of the house. Here you can see the Landaros' house, the neighbors with the one-story addition, and then the next neighbor over has a two-story addition. This, whereas this neighbor has a low one with a deck beside it. We have the same thing, where there's a lower addition with the deck beside it, and we're going two stories on part of it. You can see some of the others in the neighborhood. This is a complete two-story addition across the whole back of the house with the deck out behind that. We've kept both of them nestled together and tighter to the house. Other houses that are in the block, you come down to the corner, and it's again a narrow lot, but it turns the corner here for the cul-de-sac, and you can see the house that's built fully out the back with a two-story addition here and the garage at that point. And I just submitted, you know, four other photographs showing similar additions in the neighborhood with a master suite like we're trying to do at this point. It's very typical of the zoning in this neighborhood to go from three bedrooms to four bedrooms and to build out a portion or the full back of the house up to the second floor. It's practically the only way that you can add on to this type of floor plan. So in in summary, we have those two variances for 2.08 feet in the side yard setback here above the slope plane of 18 feet, as I showed on the back of the house. Here, that's that triangular portion, and we need an FAR variance of 1.75% or 183 square feet. I would like to point out that all of this is really due to the minimal lot width. We are at 50 feet rather than the required 60 feet. But our house does conform with the combined side yard setbacks for the area, so we do have the appropriate house-to-lot with ratio on this property. And even though we're 10 feet less than the regular lot width, we do have adequate space between us and all of our neighbors, because we do meet that combined side yard setback requirement. While we do exceed the FAR slightly by 1.75%, we are under in our building coverage on the property by a little over 3.3%. So in the two metrics, FAR and building coverage that really cover house additions and bulk, we're slightly over on one, and we're less on the other. We're less on building coverage than we are over in FAR. Would like to say this is primarily a two-story house. It does have a basement garage in the back, but there is no development up in the attic level, because it's really just too short to have something up there. So from an overall bulk standpoint, that's why FAR is bigger on the first and second floor, whereas building coverage is a little less. I think that when we look at it, the mitigating circumstances here are that with the 50-foot-wide lot, we are still meeting our width of the 65%. We're less than 65% versus 35%. So there is adequate space between all the neighbors in the lot. This is typical additions in this neighborhood. We're not proposing to widen the house or the new addition. The new addition only covers a portion of the back of the house. We've stepped it back at the corners to also minimize those edges of the house, which are views from neighboring properties as well. So this helps minimize the bulk of the addition. And we have a gable design that matches the character of the rest of the house, but since it's turned perpendicular, it allows the low point of the roof line to face both of the neighbors on the side, so that the ridge in the middle is away from those buildings as well. So for these reasons, we're asking for the board to consider approval of this application. We feel that because it's below the building coverage, that it's a very minimal ask on the floor area ratio. We tried to do an extremely efficient layout here with the floor plan and circulation. There's really no fat in this type of design that could be cut. The new owner's bedroom is very similar to the size of the other bedroom. What we're really doing is improving the bathroom and closet space for them. They had a substandard bathroom before. You know, it's approximately four feet wide. I think the improvements that we're proposing are in character with the established neighborhood character and additions that you've previously seen from the photographs. And we think this would advance the purposes of the zoning plan. We carefully tried to fit this in with the character of the neighborhood, and we're asking you to consider it for approval this evening. Are there any questions?
John, stop sharing your screen. Appreciate it.
Actually, you know what, Mr. Chairman, can I have him keep the screen on for a second? That's a question. Hey, John, can you just identify on the plan, excuse me, where the shared driveway is and what portion of it, if any, is on your client's property?
Um, the shared driveway is on the left-hand side as we're looking at the plan here. And half of the shared driveway is on our property, and the other half is on the neighbor's property. Excuse me, it's reversed here. We have approximately just about a foot more of shared driveway on the neighbor's property than ours. We're 8.52, they're 9.93.
And it's on the right, not the left, as you're looking at the survey, correct?
Yes, it's on the right as you're looking at the survey. But in terms of our plans, it's on the left-hand side of the plan, because we have the street at the bottom. So it's the left-hand side here. You come down the left-hand side, and you turn into the garage down below. So in terms of the photographs here, from the front of the house, the shared driveway is here. And here it is on the right from the back of the house. You can see a car parked in back of the Landaros, and you can see the neighbor's garage right there. It's essentially paved to the lot line for both of the properties, and you can kind of see just a seam in the pavement that indicates the lot line running approximately between the two properties there. And then you can see how it goes to garage there and garage under the house here.
Thank you.
So any, so you can stop sharing your screen then, John. Any questions from the board or Mr. James or Mr. Lindar?
Just have a question.
I just have a question. Has there been any thought or? Analysis, so to speak, as to how this? How this expansion, how this extension would would impact the light? You know, the light coming in for the for the neighbor on the on the left hand side. Of, you know, facing the front.
It's not going to have an impact on the light for the neighbor at all.
Okay.
Anything else? Can John, can you just explain why?
Because the angle with the sun is going to still, you have the maximum open space that we need on that side of the house. In terms of the separation, combined side yard setbacks. And also with the angle of the sun, we stepped the bay in the back away from the corner, so there would still be angled views out to the backyard. And, you know, our addition on that back is almost identical to the additions on the opposite side for the other neighbor.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience for Mr. James or Mr. Lindaro? I don't see any any comments from the audience. I don't see any hands raised. I'll close the public portion of this meeting then. Board members, what are your comments regarding this case?
So, Mr. Chairman, before we get comments, I just want to add that, just to remind the board. This is a FAR variance. It's under NJF forty column fifty five D dash seventy. D for the municipal land use law. As a floor area ratio variance, it requires five affirmative votes. They, the applicant needs to demonstrate special reasons in terms of satisfying the positive criteria. And basically, the board's focus here is whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the. Promote proposed permitted use, but with a larger floor area that would otherwise be permitted by ordinance. And you're also familiar with the the typical negative criteria. Without that, the applicant needs to demonstrate that there'll be no substantial detriment to the public. And that the proposal will not substantially impair the purpose and intent of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Board members, what say you?
Go first, Greg. I would be supportive of the application. I think the addition was tastefully done. It fits well with the neighborhood. When you're standing in the back there, it seems that there'll be minimal effect on the air and space of the neighbors and the property can handle the additional mass. And there is a clear hardship. There is an existing nonconformance. The house is on a narrow lot and they're basically building straight up on the first floor in the back there.
Thank you. Wolfgang?
Yeah, I would comment further that what's being proposed is not, certainly is not unique. In terms of what's in terms of the current development on that street. If you look facing from the back, if you look the house. Two over and then four over, you see, you know, some similar. Similar sizes, similar things have have been done to other houses. And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't, it there's no crowded feel. You know, looking from the back and from the front, there is no impact, first of all, but from the back, there doesn't seem to be any sort of a crowding. Or massing, you know, feel. Into that neighborhood. No more of the yard is being taken up, which in my mind is a big plus. It's really using the existing footprint. Of the house that's there to add some utility. And and it's it appears to have been pretty tastefully done in this in this instance. So, you know, with that being said, I would I would be supportive of this of this application.
Thank you. Further comment?
I I would just like to say I agree with Wolfgang and Ashley. And with respect to the FAR, I think it absolutely meets both the positive and negative criteria.
So I'll I'll give you my my point of view on this. So we have a seven point seven deviation from standard on the floor area ratio in terms of. Hundred eighty three square feet over the twenty three oh five allowed, which. Really is not not a ton in terms of square footage, you know, and seven point seven percent deviation sounds like a lot, but it's really not.
Well, wait, 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 Craig, I don't know if it's it's seven point. Just want to clarify that.
No, you're four point eight over the, you're seven point seven deviation over the standard, which is a hundred eighty three square feet over twenty three oh five.
Okay.
So you're one point seven five percent over in terms of.
Right.
Actual square footage. But if you looked at the allowable versus what you're asking for, the extent of the variance is seven point seven percent. So. But it's not a lot. So I'm not, you know, I'm not really saying, you know, an issue here. You do have a sixty six hundred square foot lot versus the six thousand that the zone requires. So even though the lot is substandard in width, it does have a larger depth, which does give you a little bit more room. And I think that the the way the build is being done, it's it's using that portion of the the property wisely. As it does have more depth. So overall, I think even though it does have a slightly oversized. Lot for the zone, they certainly can accommodate this massing. And as mentioned by Wolfgang, that that it is in keeping with. Sort of the standard of the neighborhood in a way the development has been done. So, that being said, I would also. Approve this application, so. Any other thoughts? Then, Rob, should we slip this vote or how would you like to do it?
I think that you can, well, let's put the vote. It's fine. Let's split it. I would suggest do the FAR first.
Okay, you're in the end zone either way, so. So do I have a motion on the D variance for floor area ratio?
Move approval D variance?
And do I have a second?
Second. Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
John Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Platner?
Yes. Next to the side yard setback. C variance. Do I have a motion on that?
Sure, I I make a motion to approve the side yard.
John Drew, the second, maybe?
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
John Drew Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Craig Platner?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Much for your time for looking at this project. Thank you.
Sure. Next, we'll be moving to calendar thirty eight zero zero twenty two. Four thirty seven dash four thirty nine Melbourne Avenue, Seven Bodwell Terrace. The applicant is the High Center. So you have Mike Levine. Looks like Matt Flynn has his hand up.
Eileen, once. Mr. Levine. Gets on, just want to clarify who is eligible to vote. This evening.
Should I log off now?
Yes, I'm gonna take.
Yeah, you can move back.
You can, you can. You can either leave the room or.
I'll sign off.
I think I have my notes from the last meeting. I think at the last meeting, Jody's. She had missed the April eighteenth meeting, but I think she had indicated that she watched that meeting. The only other two were Steve and Sean Drew had missed the June twentieth meeting, but I believe. But you were both absent on June twentieth, so we haven't met since then. So if you've watched the tape of the meeting, you're good to vote. If not.
I've watched the tape of the meeting.
Okay. And. In the event that we vote tonight, Joe is not here, so. Sean Drew would be voting in place of. Joe, if Sean Drew hasn't listened to the meeting, then Ashley, who is eligible to vote, would vote on that. So that's how we stand right now.
Well, let's ask Sean Drew whether he.
No, I have not watched the the tape of the twentieth, the meeting of the twentieth.
So if we go to a vote tonight, it would be Ashley voting. In Joe's absence.
Okay, so it would be Wolfgang, Steve, Ashley, Craig. Jody, Jessica.
And Amy.
And Amy, okay.
Craig, Jessica, Ashley, Wolfgang, Steve, Jody, Amy, yes.
Very good. Thank you.
If I if I counted that correctly, that would mean seven board members eligible to vote. Is that right?
Yes. So I'm assuming Matt Flynn, is he your?
Yes, Matt Flynn is, Matt Flynn will be providing our planning testimony this evening.
Okay.
Who has Matt been invited into the into as a panelist?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. Good evening. Michael Levine with Fox Rothschild here this evening on behalf of the High Center. We've already identified the property that's the subject of our application. The last time that we were before the board. We provided testimony from Rabbi Bogomilsky as well as. The project architect Dan Dubinette. We also had received supplemental testimony from Mike Lonzo Fama, the project engineer. And we're at the point to listen to planning proofs as offered by our project planner. Matt's here, Matt, you'll have to identify yourself for the record and get sworn in before we go too far here.
Before we restart, I know our planner is here, but I, he has just a. Sort of a live video of him, so I'm not, okay, there we go. He's actually here. It's like, okay, no problem.
Wait, hold on.
Wait, we're in there. There we are. Okay.
Yeah, I I would, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that that both Matt and Graham get sworn in. At this time.
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, if you both would just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's proceedings be the truth, the whole truth, but the truth?
I do.
Okay, why don't you just, both you state your names just for record. Graham, you can.
Sure, Graham Pedo, Principal Planner of Topology and serving as the Board Planner for the Township.
And Matt Flynn, F L Y N N. I have my professional planner's license in the state of New Jersey, as well as my national certification, which is the AICP certification. My education comes from Rutgers University, where I got my master's degree in planning and public policy. And I've testified before dozens of boards across the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Your credentials are accepted by this board. Please proceed, Mr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, I take it you're familiar with our application and the nature of the variance relief that we need from the zoning board this evening?
I am.
And are you familiar with the the zoning ordinance and in particular, the conditional use standards applicable to a house of worship as well as township's master plan?
I am.
Have you formed an opinion as to whether or not this application is a good candidate for the variance relief that we're seeing this evening?
Yes, I have.
Hoping you could share your your opinions and analysis with the board, please.
Sure. So by way of quick background, I know the board is familiar with this application. We are, again, just looking at block twelve zero eight, lots one, two, and thirteen. Which are proposed to be combined as a result of this application. In total, the the site comprises point eight five acres. Whereas three acres is required, which is a conditional, which is a condition for a house of worship use in the R six zone. And I'll get into that in just a minute. As I said, we are in the R six zone, which is the residential six thousand square foot zone. Importantly, just in terms of that lot area, we, this is a property that is over twelve times the minimum lot area. In that, in that R six zone for permitted uses. Again, we are conditional use, so we are looking at a different lot area requirement. But just to say that this is not by any means a small property in the context of the neighborhood. Where we are looking at properties that are more in line with that minimum lot area requirement of six thousand square feet. Just in terms of where this property is located, we are at the intersection of Melbourne Avenue and Bodwell Terrace. Currently, there are two existing single family dwellings on the property, which are proposed to be demolished, replaced with a house of worship. As this board remembers, this applicant was before this board about twenty years ago or so. Where the application was denied at that time. The applicant is back with a new plan that we think is more sensitive to the neighbors. We think that it's a better plan and Ray Strudicata testimony was already put on the record to the effect that. This is a substantially different application than what was testified to in the past. Just importantly, this is a small scale operation, a small scale house of worship. Fulfilling the need of residents, whereas right now there are no houses of worships in Melbourne Township. That are specifically geared towards people of the Orthodox Jewish faith. So just to get into that D three conditional use variance testimony. Like I said, we are requesting a variance for lot area, point eight five acres versus the three acres required for a house of worship. Again, not a small lot in the context of the overall neighborhood, nonetheless a variance. We are requesting a variance for front yard setback to Melbourne Avenue, sixty nine point eight seven feet. Proposed versus one hundred feet is the requirement. Which is actually an improvement over forty three point seven two feet, so an improvement of. Just over twenty five feet in terms of front setback to Melbourne. Another front yard setback variance to Bodwell Terrace, forty feet proposed, one hundred feet is what's required. Which is a slight improvement from thirty nine point sixteen feet, front yard setback to Bodwell. Another variance for buffer to residential use, seven point nine feet is proposed, twenty five feet is the requirement. Importantly, this is a, this is a distance to our parking lot and not the building mass itself. The distance between the proposed building and the residential property actually conforms. And I'll get to that in a minute. Also, a parking setback, which is, which is technically the same measurement of seven point nine feet. Versus twenty feet required. That's the same line that's drawn for that buffered residential use variance, but nonetheless two variances. All of those variances that I just went through are D three conditional use variances. So they do. They do have to meet an enhanced burden of proof as as opposed to being a normal C variance. Importantly, since the last time planning proofs were put on the record, there has been important case law. That has been introduced to the state. It's known as the House of Fire case from two thousand and five. Which established that when we're looking at an inherently beneficial use. Even though it's a conditional use based on the ordinance. Actually, the SECA test is what applies in this case. So that SECA test is what applies when we are looking at any inherently beneficial use. And that has a fire case, again, just reiterates that that is actually what is the applicable test, even when we're looking at a conditional use. So having said that, the fact that this isn't inherently beneficial use, I think the value of the use i- is implied. And the positive criteria certainly don't need to be met by virtue of that inherently beneficial use status. And on top of that, the fact that this is a conditional use, not a prohibited use in the R six zone. I think further speaks to the fact that the municipality also has placed some emphasis on the beneficial nature of this land use. So again, it's not a prohibited use in the R six zone, rather a conditional use. And I just went through all of those conditions that we need variances from for that use. So to run the board through that SECA test for inherently beneficial uses, it's a four pronged test. The first of which is to identify the public interest that is at stake. In this case, obviously, we are looking at a religious land use. Freedom of religion is a fundamental constitutional right. Having a decent place to worship is essential to religious practice. And furthering religious practice in a township without being confronted with barriers. That don't advance a substantial governmental interest, I think, is of paramount importance. And importantly, there is a substantial lack of this type of land. And importantly, there is a substantial lack of this type of land use specifically for Orthodox Jewish people in, in Milburn Township. So that identifies the public interest that we're talking about here. The second prong of the SECA test is to identify any potential impacts. We already have had substantial testimony put on the record from our architect and from our engineer. In terms of congestion, there is sworn expert testimony to the effect that the use will not cause any substantial congestion or traffic issues. In terms of overdevelopment, we have had our architect testify. And our architect did testify to the fact that he really did look into the architectural qualities of the neighborhood as a whole and try to integrate the proposed building with everything that's going on around us. In terms of privacy, the design intent was to provide a solid continuous screen adjacent to our neighbors. We do have substantial landscaping, substantial, substantial buffering around us. In terms of brightness, there is a seat or a design waiver related to point one foot candle that crosses over our property line in the back corner, which is simply to, to the cemetery that's directly adjacent to us. In terms of brightness affecting any of our residential neighbors, there is no substantial impact in that regard. And I would say that the, the clear intent of the zoning ordinance in terms of houses of worship as a conditional use is to front on a main road and not a local road, or in other words, not have this use be in the heart of a residential neighborhood. And I think that that, that intent is certainly advanced as a result of this application. We are on Milburn Avenue, which is the township's downtown corridor, albeit this specific location is sort of the this is, this, the location of this specific site is not in the heart of the downtown street. However, it is Milburn Avenue, which does lead into that downtown area. The third prong of the SECA test is to identify any mitigative, mitigative measures to mitigate any associated impacts. Again, there has been substantial testimony on the record in terms of the operations, in terms of the plantings and the functionality of the site. So I think that the, that aspect of the test is met as well. The fourth prong of the test is to balance the benefits against any of the mitigated impacts. I think in this case, we are looking at an application that has substantial weight being put on the positive aspects of this application. Again, I went through all those benefits as opposed to any minimal impacts on the negative side with any stipulations. To go into the zoning considerations of this land use, again, we are in the R six zone. So we are looking at, I think, ten or so specific conditions. And I already went through those conditions that we deviate from and require that D three conditional use variance for. But just to go through the other conditions that, that come along with this land use, I already spoke about lot area. Three acres is required as opposed to the six thousand that's required in the underlying R six zone. I think it's important to note that that lot area of three acres is twenty one times that of the permitted residential use in the R six zone. So to the effect that we are looking at properties around here that this applicant has looked at in the, in the last twenty years to possibly locate this land use, we are looking at residential zones that, or residential properties that were never necessarily intended for a minimum lot area that's twenty one times the minimum requirement. So we are looking at a lot of much smaller lots when comparing that to the more strict lot area requirement for houses of worship. Also importantly, lot frontage two hundred feet is what's required and we are meeting that requirement. Lot depth, two hundred and fifty feet is what's required for houses of worship, and we do meet that requirement as well. And I'll just note here that in the R six zone for the underlying residential uses, only ninety feet is required in terms of lot depth. So in terms of that difference, again, we're talking about two hundred and fifty feet required for houses of worship as opposed to that ninety feet required for a permitted use. Vehicular access, not on a, on a local street, I already went into that. We do have frontage on Milburn Avenue. I know that the planner's report did mention that that is a variance. I think that we put testimony on the record already to the effect that that actually is, is not a variance because our vehicular access is concentrated on Milburn Avenue. Front setback, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm sorry to interrupt, Matt, but just if you could clarify that a bit, I mean, the site plan indicates that the curb cut on Bodwell is for emergency access only and it's not, doesn't have standard asphalt treatment, it has grassed pavers as well as a a collapsible chain that, that prevents regular access. Was it the, the, the plans and the testimony that that will be emergency access only? And otherwise would not use that, that access to Bodwell?
Right, emergency access only for vehicles, but also for pedestrian access. And, and the reasoning for that in terms of the pedestrian access, again, this was put on the record already, but the purpose of that was because the alternative means of pedestrian access would be from the driveway along Milburn Avenue, which is a steep accessway, so this is a much safer alternative for pedestrians to access the, the site. Moving on, the next condition for houses of worship would be lot coverage, forty five percent is what's permitted, and we are complying with that. Front setback, I went into, one hundred feet is what's required and we do need variances for our two front, frontages. Importantly, again, forty feet is the, forty feet or prevailing is what's permitted for the underlying residential use that's permitted here. So again, we are looking at a much stricter requirement for that front setback as well as it relates to houses of worship. Moving on to side setbacks, forty feet is what's required, we, we comply with that requirement. In terms of for permitted uses, for a building of this height, a side setback of only twelve feet would be what's required. And again, forty feet is required for houses of worship. In terms of rear setback, fifty feet is required, as little as eighteen feet would be required for permitted uses in the R six zone. Buffer to residential use, twenty five feet is what's required. Obviously, that requirement would not apply to a permitted residential use in the R six zone because it deals with that relationship between residential and non-residential. Parking setback, twenty feet is required and principal height, thirty two feet is required. So I said all that to say and to relate the, the conditions with the requirements of the underlying permitted uses. All of that, just to say that all of these conditions, I think, really relate to a house of worship that is contemplated to be much larger than the one that is proposed tonight. What we're seeing, what we're, what is being proposed tonight is a house of worship that is of a very small scale, just based on the building coverage requirement for a house of worship on a three-acre property that contemplates a building of about sixty thousand square feet in terms of gross floor area, which is much larger than what's being proposed with this application. And, and I say that because a three-acre site with twenty three percent building coverage and two stories of that would amount to sixty thousand square feet gross floor area. So all of these requirements, again, they really relate to a much larger land use than what's being proposed. And to that effect, I think that they are sort of detrimental to smaller houses of worship, whi- which is what, what's being proposed tonight. We don't need a huge lot, we don't need a three-acre property to accommodate the proposed house of worship. It actually fits very well, the small-scale operation on the lot area that we have. Whereas if we look at that zoning requirement, that really takes a one-size-fits-all approach, it really doesn't make any exceptions to, to smaller lots or smaller buildings. So all of those buffer requirements, all of those setback requirements, I think, relate in terms of zoning just as much to a very large building, as much, sorry, as much as they do relate to a very small building. So simply put, I think that all of these requirements are not very conducive to a to a smaller house of worship. I think it sort of makes the assumption that all houses of worships that are going to be proposed are going to be of this grandiose scale. And in looking at other properties where a lot area variance would not be required, so any other properties that would have that three-acre lot size to them using GIS analysis of the something like twenty four thousand residential properties, less than twenty of them actually had three acres in lot size. So in the last twenty years, the applicant has certainly looked at other properties where this land use could be located without requiring the variance relief that we're seeking tonight. But really, there's very few that, that meet all of these requirements. So it's, it's more likely that any application for a house of worship would need to come before this board seeking similar D three conditional use variances. And I'm just looking at my notes here, just to correct myself. I said of the twenty four thousand residential properties, I'm going to backtrack for a second, correct myself, it's actually something like six thousand two hundred residential parcels in Milburn Township. Having said all that, I think that this specific location is actually suitable for the proposed land use. Not only because the size is actually conducive to the, the small-scale operations that we're proposing. We do have good buffering to our residential properties around us. Milburn Avenue, again, is the township's downtown corridor, so there are non-residential uses along this roadway. The, the small-scale nature of the property, I think, meets the needs of the, of the, of the.
I think he froze up.
Yep.
Want to try to get ahold of him, Mike?
Yeah, let's see. He still, I just, he just disappeared from my screen, I wonder if he's trying to reconnect.
He might, we'll look at that side.
Sorry, Anthony, all right, sorry about that. I think you guys, I think I left off where I was, I was talking about how the rabbi came on at the last hearing, did you guys get any of that?
Why, why don't, why don't you go back, Matt? I think the last thing I caught was when you were talking about that there were non-residential uses along the corridor along Milburn Avenue towards the downtown.
Sure, so to that, I was speaking to how this specific location is a suitable location for the proposed use. There are non-residential uses along Milburn Avenue, we have substantial buffering to our residential neighbors. So I think I was, I was trying to relate all of that to how the small-scale nature of this property and the small-scale nature of the proposed use are suitable for this location. Noting that the particularly, the particular suitability set test is not applicable here, being that the positive criteria are presumptively met by virtue of that SECA test. And what I was going to say was that the rabbi did come on here at the last hearing, providing testimony as to how this, this undersized property is actually adequate for the operations that he is proposing to conduct on this site. So having said all that, I think the, the point here is that all of the requirements that are, that are coming from that conditional use of houses of worship in the R six zone are applying very strict requirements that, just in the case of the lot area requirement, we're looking at a lot area requirement of twenty one times the underlying zone. So not only do we have very few lots that meet all of these requirements, they, they really are geared towards much larger scale houses of worship than what's being proposed. So going to the C variances that are being requested, they're all very minimal. Steep slope disturbance, six thousand square feet, six thousand and eight square feet versus the one thousand square feet. Our engineer did come on at the last hearing testifying that these are man-made slopes, not natural slopes, actually the result of the residential construction on this property, and to the extent that the intent of that ordinance is to control erosion, that, that intent is met. In terms of parking spaces, twenty five spaces are proposed versus fifty two spaces required. And that's coming from the requirement of the greater of one space per three seats or five spaces per one thousand square feet. Again, our engineer did come on at the last hearing testifying to the, to the effect that the number of parking spaces is adequate to accommodate the anticipated demand of this land use. Parking location is within the required residential buffer. However, that parking location is substantially buffered from Milburn Avenue and the, the building itself is substantially buffered from our neighboring uses. And I think we need also a C variance for trash pickup location. The applicant must conform with one outside the building. I'm, I'm looking to counsel, I'm not sure if that was, that was.
Actually, our architect had testified that they'll provide their, the applicant will be providing the required area for collecting refuse and recyclables in, in a designated basement area.
Okay, so my understanding would be that that would not require C relief then. So in terms of all of those C variances, our architect did put on the record at the last hearing that we are substantially compliant in terms of the underlying zone, the underlying R six zone, which would relate to residential uses and not houses of worship, and which is why we're before this board tonight. I think it is worth reiterating, though, that we do comply with the lot area, lot width, lot depth, both front setbacks, both side setbacks, building coverage, lot coverage, height and FAR. All of those would be typically used to control the building mass and scale, ensuring that the proposed building fits in with the buildings around us and the other buildings throughout the zone. So to the extent that we are proposing a small-scale house of worship that has been designed to integrate well throughout the neighborhood and with our neighbors, I think that that really goes towards the negative criteria of the, of the C variances, so any potential impacts to the public. We're not looking at an overly sized building, we're really looking at a building in this case that is, is within the scale of that which is around us and within the scale of that which the zoning ordinance wants generally in this zone. So having said that, all of the C relief in this case is justified by virtue of the C two balancing test whereby the benefits of the application as a whole outweigh any detriment. Again, the positive criteria are presumptively met by virtue of this being an inherently beneficial use. And all of those positive criteria for the use carry forth for the C variances. All C variances are necessary to effectuate this positive redevelopment of the site. In terms of negative criteria, again, none of the C variances are resulting in an overly sized building that has no relation to the zoning that's around us or the neighborhood that's around us. Most of the C variances actually relate to the parking and the circulation rather than the building itself. So when we look at the circulation and the parking, we do have testimony that the parking supply will meet the actual demand, that emergency access is just for emergency access, it's not going to cause a backup of traffic onto Bodwell Terrace. Again, slope disturbance can be controlled with standard erosion control measures. And in terms of the parking location variance, this is kind of tucked into that hill that's at, at an incline from Milburn Avenue with substantial landscaping from the street. And I think that there, there has been substantial effort put into the design of this project, which again is very small-scale in nature. And all of those C variances, I think, none of the C variances do have a substantial impact on the intent of the zone plan or the public at large. So to go into the design waivers, we are requesting a design waiver for utility connection location. Underground service connection is required.
Matt, let me help you out there as well. Our, our, so that was an open comment in the initial review memos that we got from the board's consultants. Our project architect Dan Dubinette did clarify as part of his testimony that the electric connections will be provided underground and will comply with that design requirement.
Okay, great. So then there would only be one design waiver, which is for white spill. Okay, great. So then there would only be one design waiver, uh, which is for white spillage, point one foot candles. Uh, spilling over into that cemetery, which is adjacent to us, uh, which also fronts on Melbourne Avenue. Uh, it's only point one foot candle. And again, it's not to a residential property, but rather to a cemetery and it's in the back corner of the site. Uh, there was another design waiver that was noted in the planner's report that has been aired out since the last hearing. Or rather at the last hearing, which was for accessible parking space dimensions. Um, our architect did put on the record that, or maybe it was our engineer, I'm not sure, but uh, the, the actual dimensions of the. Parking spaces do comply with that sixteen by nineteen foot requirement. Um, the reason for the, the confusion was the curb. Um, that, that spans the length of our parking lot, but the testimony was that uh cars actually overhang over that curb. So effectively. These uh parking space dimensions are compliant and a design waiver would not be required. So in terms of all of those design waivers, these, the tests for those come from section fifty one of the municipal land use law. Not section seventy, which is where we get our C variance criteria. Um, section fifty one establishes the, the test for design exceptions. Which is based on a standard of reasonableness and impracticality. Um, basically whether strict or literal enforcement of those design requirements serve no practical planning purpose. Um, and in this case, we're only looking at one design waiver, which is for that point one foot candle. And I think the intent of that uh certainly is not necessarily geared towards uh cemeteries, generally speaking. Um, but rather trying to mitigate any impacts to uh. Uh, more active land uses such as residential or, or commercial or the like. Uh, so I think that the test for the design waivers is met by virtue of the fact that, again, uh, strict, uh, strict enforcement of. Of that uh design waiver would not serve any practical planning purpose. So uh, in summary, I think I would say that the, the, really the, the heart of this application is that conditional use variance. Um, those, I believe it was uh. One, two, three, five conditions that we deviate from uh for uh the D three conditional uses. Um, and I think that all of those again can be granted by virtue of that CICA test, which I put on the record regarding uh how this is an inherently beneficial use. And as such, the positive criteria are inherently uh or presumptively met. And uh, any substantial impacts are mitigated by virtue of the uh small nature, the small scale of this land use. And uh, and reiterating the fact that really these requirements relate to uh. Land uses that are much larger in scale than the one that is proposed. Uh, so with that, I, I think I'll close and open myself up to questioning.
So I'll start real quick. Um. You know, you started your testimony by saying that the issue of Rest Judicata has been, been solved. Like, I wholeheartedly disagree there. So. Why don't you tell me the deviate, the difference between the original application, this one, and why you think that it is. Um, that, that this Rest Judicata collateral stopple. Because we heard from Mr. McDonough on the first testimony regarding his opinion, but now we're on to a new planner here. So. Bring me up to speed on how you think that this is not an exercise in Rest Judicata collateral stopple.
Sure. So uh, I could be wrong, but I believe that my testimony was that the Rest Judicata has been aired out.
I'm, I'm happy to have Matt answer that question. I just, I just want to clarify, it's the applicant's position. That the uh, the Race Judicata question has not been. Excuse me, determined by the board. We're aware that the board, there was a threshold issue as to that. We provided extensive testimony with regard to that. My understanding was that the board was reserving, you know, its decision and judgment on that pending hearing more about the application. So it's certainly not the applicant's belief. Or contention that the board has ruled that this is, you know, this is a substantially different application and Race Judicata doesn't apply.
Okay, because I, I understood Mr. Flynn at the beginning of his testimony made the comment that that was the case.
I, I thought, Matt, you can clarify. I thought you had just said the testimony, the applicant had provided testimony as to that issue.
That's certainly what I meant. That's certainly what I meant. So.
Okay, so, so why don't you tell us your thoughts on that?
Sure. And just for the record, I am directly employed by uh Mr. McDonough. Um, but just to put it on the record. Uh, in terms of Rest Judicata, obviously, uh, based on case on uh state law. Boards cannot hear the same application uh twice. Uh, so in the past twenty years, actually a lot has changed. Um, to start. The, which I went over, the House of Fire case is a new case law. It came out in two thousand and five.
Let's, let's stop right there a second. Let's talk about the House of Fire case. Um, that, that is in township of what township was that involved in?
I'll tell you in one second.
Clifton, Clifton. Okay. Now, what exactly happened in that case that? Um, that it was appealed. What did the township do that created that issue?
Um, I'm gonna have to refresh my memory. If you could just bear with me.
Because if it's so pivotal, I'd expect you would know it, chapter and verse.
Well, there's a lot of case law out there.
The underlying holding in the case is pivotal. I mean, the procedural posture and the background facts leading up to the legal conclusion are not necessarily so.
Right, but I want to tie, I want to tie it to Melbourne Township, because there's certain things a township of Clifton did that caused this issue. That Melbourne did not.
So it's, it's my understanding and I'll, I'll, I'll look to council to, to jump in, but it is my understanding that that case law is uh generally used. For cases just like this, when you have a conditional use that's also an inherently beneficial use. Um, whereas the determination uh of that board was that. Um, the CICA test would, would be the, the applicable test when you have that type of situation.
Hmm. Township have clipped and moved the goalposts during the middle of the case. That was the problem with that case. The thirty five foot setback. For um, for homes and a ten foot setback for houses of worship. During the case, they moved the goalposts. They made it thirty five feet for a house of worship also. Eighteen parking spots were originally required for that house of worship. And then during, during the case, the town council changed it to thirty five spots. So they made it more burdensome to get the actual approval. In the House of Fire case. So the amended ordinance put a substantial burden on religious exercise. Is that the case here in Melbourne?
Again, the, the effect of the House of Fire case is that when we have a conditional use, that's an inherently beneficial use, the CICA test. Is the applicable test. So regardless of the, the, the merits of that case, the outcome is still the same.
I wholeheartedly disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I, uh, can I ask Mr. Flynn a question related to this?
Please do.
Focus it a little bit um in terms of his testimony. Uh, Mr. Flynn, do you have an opinion as to whether. A, an alleged change in the law. Impacts the law of Rest Judicata.
Yes, because the test that you have to apply to justify same is, is going to be different.
So if you have one case that is, goes to a conclusion, whatever the case may be, land use case. And it's denied and it's not appealed. And then the law changes. Ten, twenty years later, however it changes, is the applicant, in your opinion, as a professional planner, then permitted. To bring the exact, let's say it's identical, identically same application and say. We want this application to be heard again because now the rules have changed.
Well, in this case, there are other factors that, that go into the Rest Judicata determination, in my opinion. Uh, so we don't have to rely on that fact alone, whether or not that, that could or should be the only consideration.
Okay, that, that, that's what I thought you were gonna say. Thank you for the clarification.
Um, so just, go ahead.
Could we please have Rob Simon uh give the board uh his understanding of CICA? I, I think that would benefit us.
Well. It, would, you want me to do that now or do you want me to do that later? It's up to the board. I, I'm happy to do it now if you'd like me to.
Go ahead, Rob.
So, you know, i- in terms of the CICA balancing test, um, that applies. Under circumstances where there is determined to be inherently beneficial use. And houses of worship have been determined to constitute inherently beneficial uh inherently beneficial uses. So under what's called the CICA test, and that came out of a, a case. Uh, CICA versus, I think it was Board of Adjustment of uh Wall Township in around nineteen ninety two. Uh, that court uh suggested that certain guidelines to municipal boards when. Balancing the positive and negative criteria, because in the end, the board. Um, needs to conduct a, a balancing test for, for these kind of cases. So first. The board uh needs to identify what the public interest is at stake and some uses, of course. Are more compelling uh than others. And I'll just, I always like to use an example of, you know, the. The hospital for, you know, neurosurgery may be at the very, very top. Of the inherently uh beneficial use of subject matters. And believe it or not, a school bus depot has been determined uh by the courts to constitute. Inherently beneficial use. So there's a wide range of what is inherently beneficial and correspondingly. Um, boards may view that the public interest at stake for certain uses are more compelling than. Other uses. And I would argue, for example, that the uh, the neurosurgery center uh for, you know, emergency surgeries. Is uh more compelling than the school bus parking lot or the school bus depot. So that's the first prong. And then, and Graham can get into this as well. The second prong is that the board needs to identify the detrimental effects, if any. That are going to ensue from the granting of the uh variance. So, you know, whether there's an increase in traffic, whether there's a, a tendency to impair residential character. Um, you know, will usually relate or, or be considered when you're talking about a non-residential use. In a residential uh zone. And, you know, certainly when it's, when it's minimal as determined by the board. Um, it, it need not outweigh any inherently beneficial use. To, in essence, that satisfies the positive criteria. So that's the second prong. And then in the third prong, the board may. Uh, decide to reduce the detrimental effects or determine, hey, are there, are there ways? That we can reduce the detrimental impacts by imposing reasonable conditions on the use. And if so, then the weight that's accorded to the adverse effect should be reduced. Uh, logically by the anticipated effect of those restrictions. Or the board may determine, hey, look, there's nothing that we can do other than A, B, and C. To reduce the detrimental impacts. And then fourth, the board then weighs the positive and negative criteria. You have the inherently beneficial use and then, then these, in essence, these three prongs and determine as part of the fourth prong of the CICA balancing test. By, in balancing the positive, negative criteria, whether on balance, the grant of the variance would cause a substantial detriment. To the public good. So that's the, that's the four prongs of this CICA balancing test. So, but in the end, you're balancing, you know, the positive criteria versus the negative criteria as you. Identify it. Now, I will tell you that even though the case in CICA. Actually states, you know, in the fourth uh prong that you, you know, you do this balancing to determine whether the variance would cause a substantial detriment. To the bub, public good. I believe that as part of that fourth prong, you also determine. Whether the variance would cause a substantial impairment to the master plan and zoning ordinance. And the reason why I opine that is that statutorily. Under the municipal land use law for a use variance, that is, that is the criteria. Or one of the criteria for the negative criteria. Second prong in the negative criteria, to be more precise. And if the applicant wasn't required to determine that based on a balancing test, then. You would be ignoring the statutory criteria, which you're not permitted to do. So Steve, I hope that answers your question and hopefully not in too much of a long-winded fashion.
Very helpful. Thank you.
So. It's also the underlying case, so that's very interesting too. So I suggest reading that at one point, because you also deal with the Medici standard as well. But so getting, going back to the um, the issue we have here of Rest Judicata collateral stopple. Um, any of these, any of these requested uh. Variance for relief, uh, are they exacerbated over the last application?
Uh, I wasn't a part of the last application, so I'm gonna defer the.
Mr. If I could just remember the board, I mean, I grant you it's been several months back now, but we actually submitted to the board in advance of one of our hearings. The site plan from the last application. And we had Mr. Lanzama. Open it up and review with the board, kind of a chapter and verse, the, what was proposed the last time around and what was proposed this time around and what the. What the different uh, you know, bulk uh standards were, the proposed dimensions. Um. And kind of went over all of that. And, and quite frankly, in preparing Matt for testimony this evening, I wasn't anticipating that we'd be retracing that ground.
Well, I mean, he's your planner.
He's right. He's our planner, but he's obviously not the same planner that testified previously. Uh, and he also wasn't entering this hearing. Thinking that he would be reiterating all the previous Rest Judicata testimony.
Well, maybe he has a different view than your former planner.
Matt, do you, do you think uh, this is a thing decided and the board shouldn't be hearing this application?
Um, look, uh, what I'll say is, well, the answer is no. Um, but I will say that there, there are other factors that went into the Rest Judicata. Um, opinion of, of my office and not only the fact that the test has changed since the prior application. Um, but also the fact that the last application was a retrofit of an existing building. The, the application before us tonight is a brand new building. Um, it's also our opinion that just circumstances of, of life have changed since COVID has come into effect. Um, there's, there's been a lot of changes in, in that regard, but I would say probably the biggest. From a planning standpoint, from a physical planning standpoint, the biggest change since the prior application is that. We're looking at a new building. It's literally a new building. It's, but whereas previously it was a retrofit of what's there today. So it's, it's a brand new building this time around. Um, so in my opinion, my opinion is the same as my colleagues. Um, that this is a, a new application.
So, so you say you have adequate buffers to the residential area, correct?
Mr. Chairman, can I, I just want to make sure this on the record. Uh, uh, Mr. Flynn. Uh, with regard to your Rest Judicata opinion that you just gave, um, have you reviewed the. Site plan that Mr. Levine referred to that was part of the, the prior application?
No.
Have you reviewed the resolution that was part, that was issued by the Board of Adjustment in connection with the prior application?
No.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Flynn.
Sure. So, so you mentioned that there's adequate buffers to the residential area, correct?
Correct.
Your buffer to the residence, residential D three variance right now that you're looking for is seven point nine feet. Um, with the permitted amount being twenty five feet, looking for a seventeen point one foot. Deviation. Or sixty eight percent. So what would you consider to be insignificant?
So that's seven point nine feet is to the parking lot. The building itself is much farther away from that property line. And there is landscaping uh between the parking lot and the residential property. And it was my testimony that these requirements treat a, a house of worship that has sixty thousand square feet of gross floor area. Exactly the same as a house of worship that we're looking at. Exactly the same as a house of worship that we're looking at today, which is much smaller in scale. So those more significant buffers that are required. Um, aren't necessarily contemplating the fact that a house of of a house of worship of this size is is possible or could be proposed. It's really looking at something that's that's much larger. Again, something on a three acre property that has twenty-three percent building coverage. Um, you know, here we're looking at twenty-three percent building coverage, but we're on a much smaller lot. So it makes sense, it makes sense to me that those requirements exist for that large of a house of worship. Because that's that's a large building in a residential zone. Here we're looking at a building that's substantially compliant with the underlying zone requirements. Um, in terms of mass and scale, so we are looking at a building that's much more in scale with with what's uh with what's around us.
Any questions from other members? Go ahead, Steve.
Right, so let's, um, Mr. Flynn, I'd like to drill down on this a little bit because you're. You're kind of using, you know, open-ended terms, so. Could you please, as specifically as you can, talk to us about what other houses of worship you've looked at? In Milburn Short Hills and, you know, mathematically. How does this applicant application compare to those houses? Because you say. Really big and really small, and I'd like you to put some numbers around that. And then I'd like to understand, you know, kind of where your cutoff is. In terms of what that relationship should be, you know, this is really big and this is real, let's just put some numbers around this. What, let's begin with what other houses of worship in Milburn Short Hills you've looked at. Give us their sizes, their dimensions, and then compare it to to this application, so we can understand your thinking.
Sure, so I can tell you that my analysis, uh. Did look at um the Benai Israel, uh, Saint Stevens, the First Baptist Church, Mount Zion.
One, just just pick one and just give, take us through one of them, let's go through Saint Stevens. So what what size is Saint Stevens?
Uh, so again, my analysis for Saint Stevens, uh, the notes that I have here is that it didn't comply with uh the lot area. It didn't comply with the minimum lot depth. It didn't comply with the vehicular access along a a primary secondary collector street. It didn't comply with.
Okay, so what about, what about another one? I mean, you see what I'm trying to get at, right? Because you're saying something is really big and you're saying something is is small on a relative basis, and I just. Need to understand, you know, what your what your numbers are behind that. So that I can either agree with that or disagree with that.
No, I think I understand, so. All of the houses of worship that I looked at needed some level of conditional use variance relief. Um, what I'm saying is that the requirements for houses of worship. Are so stringent uh as a as conditional use requirements. Uh, that they really relate to a building that's much larger than the one that's being contemplated tonight.
Much larger.
So if we were looking at three acres, which is the minimum lot requirement, and we're looking at twenty-three percent building coverage. And we're looking at a two-story building, that's a gross floor area of sixty thousand square feet. Um, and if we're looking at the proposed building, just give me a second. Just. So the proposed building is twenty-three percent uh building coverage and that comes out to, um. I'm sorry, the proposed building is actually only eleven point seven four percent building coverage, which comes out to four thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet. So if you were to double that for a two-story building, that comes out to something like eight thousand six hundred square feet. As opposed to the sixty thousand uh square foot building that I just alluded to. And that's, that's a hypothetical building, so in terms of the other. Their houses of worship in the area, they too needed conditional use uh relief. And I can say that uh it's likely for a similar reason. Because maybe they were a smaller scale in nature than what's than what's contemplated per zoning. But to compare it to the size and scale of other buildings, I haven't done that analysis.
Okay, and just, and so, and so, yeah, okay, that that's good, thank you, appreciate that, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, just for clarification, Mr. Flynn, what's the square footage of the proposed building?
Um, the square footage of the proposed building is four thousand three hundred twenty-four square feet.
Man, are you talking about the footprint or?
I'm talking about the total square footage of the of the building.
Okay, so that's the.
Including, including basement.
Okay, hold on one second. Michael, do you have that, uh, that number?
Matt, it should be your testimony, just look at sheet four of the uh site plan. Floor area ratio calculation, it has a parenthetical indicating total proposed uh building square footage of the floor area.
Okay.
Right-hand column of the chart.
Mm-hmm. It's loading.
Thirteen thousand. Twelve thousand nine seventy-two.
Actually, ten thousand three twenty-one point two.
Twelve nine seventy-two.
Wait, 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 guys, uh, this, as Mr. Levine appropriately stated, should be uh Mr. Flynn's testimony. So, Mr. Flynn, what's the square footage of the of the building?
And Mr. Simon, just to clarify, you're looking for the total floor area, correct?
Yeah, including.
Okay, yeah, I have it, I have it, sorry about that, it's a ten thousand three hundred twenty-one square feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and that, and by the way, that relates to the the floor area ratio, which is uh compliant to the underlying zone. There is no FAR requirement for the conditional use itself. So the the floor area ratio requirement in the R six zone is thirty-six percent. And we're only at twenty-eight point zero two percent.
And the ten thousand three twenty-one square feet, does that include the basement?
Uh, just by the way, I'm not the engineer, so I would have to just look at the zoning ordinance and see if that's included in the floor area definition.
Yeah, you you don't need to do it this second, did you look at that so far?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
I I will say that D V is for attachment F.
Sorry, I didn't catch.
Of the application. The application shows thirty-five point two-two percent proposed for a total of twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-two square feet.
Okay, well, I think the application was prepared prior to the time the plans were finalized. But if we need to amend the application, we can certainly do that, but the signed and sealed engineer engineering plans. Uh, accurately reflect the proposed condition.
Yeah, I I believe there was, at the very beginning, there was a, the attachment F was filed. Before the actual plans were finalized and the floor area ratio that's referenced in attachment F is actually higher, the building was made slightly smaller. So it, the number indicated on, I believe, its page. Four of the Casey and Keller plans reflects, um. The floor area of. Ten thousand three twenty-one. Oh, I mean, I'll I'll double check that just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Elaine, that's that's my recollection as well. Thank you.
Go ahead, Steve. Do you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Flynn? Uh, go to Graham.
Actually, I just.
You know, Graham, hang on one second, let's go to you first.
Yeah, I had a question also, just kind of continuing on the the size, relative size analysis, so to speak. Like, what sorts of seating are you looking at in terms of, you know, capacity for these other locations versus this location?
Uh, again, I don't have a uh a comparison in terms of seating between. Uh, the the proposed house of worship and any of the other ones.
So in terms of, you know, if something is, you know, in terms of, you know, the implications that might have for required parking. And, you know, required parking traffic, other things, there's no, you haven't kind of considered that in terms of. In in the scope of this analysis of yours.
Uh, no, that wouldn't necessarily be something on the planning end, that would be more so for the engineers or uh the traffic experts.
Okay.
I I just want to clarify so that we all understand, you did offer some testimony with regard to specific other houses of worship in town. And I I guess my understanding of your testimony is that you identified. Generally various aspects of the conditional use standards that these existing houses of worship do not comply with. Uh, but in terms of what the underlying precise figures are, you don't have those, you just kind of stop the analysis as to whether or not. Uh, they comply with the with the existing conditional use standards, is that correct? Is my understanding correct?
Right, yeah, I looked at a lot of houses of worship throughout the township and, you know, it. Basically, the conclusion was that most, if not all of them, did require some sort of, uh. If not granting of relief, uh, the the current conditions are um non-conforming in in several respects.
It was primarily with regard to lots, minimum required lot size and also uh frontage on a um kind of non-local, if you will, street. You know, county road or a primary, secondary collector.
Exactly.
But you don't have any specific examples you can give, just general observation?
Well, what I can say is that the the analysis wasn't just based on pure observation, it was based on a GIS analysis of. Uh, lot sizes, um, what street they're on, which are kinds of hard and fast uh data that are accessible. Um, but in terms of taking a ruler out there and measuring front setback and things like that, that wasn't a part of my analysis.
Man, if if the members of the board felt that that would be useful information for them to have in in terms of evaluating our application and and the extent of relief that that we require. Uh, would we be able to gather that information and provide it to the board uh before they uh ultimately vote on the application?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is that I would I would. Like to have, you know, obviously some direction in terms of what that analysis would would include, because it's a lot of, it's a lot of data.
It it just goes, it just goes to your testimony, right? You you use words like grandiose. And then you use words like, you know, small scale to describe the application, so. You know, you tell us how you define grandiose and you tell us how you define small scale on a relative basis, that's kind of. That's where I'm at, that's where I'm trying to understand how you're thinking about these things.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, if I could just clarify that, when I when I use the word grandiose, it was simply. To describe the requirements that are set forth in the zoning code and not necessarily making an apples-to-apples comparison between the proposed house of worship and some other house of worship. It was simply considering what the requirements are. Are, um. Basically contemplating, so again, the requirements contemplate a three-acre site with twenty-three percent building coverage. So based on the requirements alone, that building that is intended to, uh.
Yeah.
Be, uh, you you get what I'm saying?
Yeah, you you've said this before, right, I understand.
And, okay, and I'm sorry, just one more question, just just to clarify. Just to see how is the board, is how we're supposed to kind of interpret your, the view on Restudicata, I mean. The response that get, I mean, you haven't really examined, you know, the previous applications. You know, so in terms of your view on Restudicata, there really isn't one. Really, because they would require a direct comparison and analysis of of the previous.
So my my testimony, sorry, my testimony on Restudicata. Is, um, you know, based on conversations that I've had with John McDonough, who already put in that testimony regarding Restudicata, so.
Wolfgang, can I interrupt? I just want to, just so the record's clear here. Um, had, did you listen to Mr. McDonough's testimony with regard to Restudicata?
I didn't listen to it, but I do have his uh, his notes.
And did you listen to Mr. Lanza Fama's testimony regarding Restudicata?
I listened to the prior hearing, um, I listened to to that audio and that video.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that was, I think it was the hearing before where he talked about. Uh, that Mr. Lanza Fama addressed the issue of Restudicata, I don't, I don't think, did you listen to that testimony?
Yeah, and I think that was, um, that was, that was April, I think.
If I'm freezing up on anybody else.
Um, I didn't catch that.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Now I can.
Oh.
Sorry, what you just said, what you just said, I couldn't, I couldn't make out.
It was absolutely brilliant.
Well, that would make it no different than any, anything else that you've.
All right, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so, so I was just, just clarifying, Mr. Flynn, the testimony that you did hear. Or watch, um, prior to your testimony this evening.
Yeah, I believe that I did hear, um, our architect, or rather, our engineer testified to it, I have to go back and and, uh. And look at what I listened to, but, um.
Yeah, believe. Engineers' Restudicata testimony?
Say again, counsel?
You're, you're, what you're trying to recollect is it with regard to the engineer's Restudicata testimony?
Correct.
But is testimony with regard to uh the engineering aspects of the current application you listened to, correct?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Wolfgang, I interrupted you.
No, that's, that that clears it up, thank you.
Anything else for board members, uh, questions for, uh, Mr. Flynn? Go ahead, Graham.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Flynn, can you just clarify for the board, I appreciate the testimony that you gave regarding the analysis that you had done, uh, you know, regarding the. Um, similar situations, um, to which, um, residential zones or residential districts are these conditional uh use standards applicable? Uh, can you clarify that for the board so they have that information?
Yeah, so the same conditional use, um, requirements, and I'm just gonna just fact-check myself while I'm saying it. But I think R three, R four, R five, R six, R seven. And R eight, I believe it's all of the R zones, but I'm just, uh, double checking that while, while we're going.
Okay, yeah, if you could double check that, I think that would be helpful.
Okay, so just while I'm going through it, uh, R three, R four, R five, R six are definitely, um, included in that. Uh, I'm looking at R seven, R seven is included in that. R eight as well, and I believe that's all of the R zones.
Thank you, um, and then are there any other zone districts within the township that do permit uh houses of worship as a conditional use?
Yes, there is a, um, it's called the commercial and medical office zone, if I'm. Um, remembering properly, I'm just looking, um. I believe it's called the O C M zone or the C O M zone.
The C M O.
C M O, okay.
And are those standards and are the conditional use standards of the C M O zone, uh, similar or, you know, different than the residential uh conditional use standards?
Yeah, those conditions are substantially more lax, I would say, as opposed to the conditional use standards. Um. In in the R zones.
Okay, thank you.
And just, yeah, you're welcome, and just to that point, I'll just note here that in that C M O zone or O C M, I'm sorry. In that O C M zone, um. Like I said, the standards are much more lax for houses of worship. But I think it's important to note that that zone and many of those properties in that zone. Are actually directly adjacent to nineteen uh other R six zoned properties, so. There is a a correlation or a similarity between this location and that zone. Whereas that zone and this zone, we're both looking at, you know, adjacent R six zoned uh properties. And, you know, I I guess I would say that it's important that. Despite those standards being more lax and still having adjacency to R six zoned properties. And this property having substantially stricter regulations and still having that adjacency to R six properties. I think to some extent speaks to the fact that the zoning ordinance does, um. Contemplate some level of appropriateness for, uh, for this. For this application being adjacent to those properties and. And I'm just trying to find where I wrote it down, but I think that in terms of that O C M zone, we would only need one front yard setback and we would be pretty close to compliant at that. In terms of lot area. In terms of lot area, we're just under the lot area requirement in that OCM zone. I think thirty thousand square feet is required in the OCM zone and we're just under that at. Well, rather than do the calculation, I think I could say that we're we're just, I think we're just under like two thousand square feet under that, so I think. In terms of percentages, we're ninety-two percent conforming in terms of lot area in the OCM zone as opposed to something like twenty-three percent. Conforming in terms of lot area in the R six zone. And just to kind of wrap that up, there, those are really the only two conditions that are applicable in that OCM zone. Whereas here we have something like ten conditions that we have to comply with.
And so you you made the comment that there's portions of the OCM zone that are but residential zones. But there's also substantial portions of the OCM zone within Milburn that do not. About residential zones, right?
Correct, and I think the the important consideration here is that the the lot area minimum in that OCM zone is thirty thousand square feet. And so when we look at the properties that are thirty thousand square feet in the OCM zone, we are looking at some properties that directly about. Several R six properties like directly behind.
Thank you, just one follow up question on that point, did the CMO, it's CMO, sorry to correct it, but it is the CMO zone. Does the CMO zone, under its conditional use standards for houses of worship, contain any requirements for buffers from residential properties in that section? Just to kind of advance that thought.
No. So that's another requirement that is specific to a conditional use of house of worship in the R six zone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Graham?
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Go on, Rob.
Just just a couple of follow ups, you, Mr. Flynn, you talked to, you said a couple times. Lack of land use for Orthodox Jewish people, or you mentioned Orthodox Jewish faith. Is that what is being proposed as part of this application, as far as you know?
As far as I know, and I'll just preface that by saying I'm not an expert on any. Type of Jewish faith, so based on my conversations with the applicant, that that is the case.
And. You're not aware of any. Professional traffic or parking or circulation testimony that's been presented by the applicant so far, correct?
No, the only testimony that I recall is from the engineer regarding the fact that right now there's a active driveway that. Connects to Bodwell Terrace, which is getting removed as a result of this application, pretty much getting replaced with that emergency only. Driveway, and so to that effect, having a. A less, less of a burden on Bodwell in terms of cars going in and out of of that property.
And and you said that the applicant looked at other properties, did it look at other properties? In just the. R three through R seven residential zones, or did they also look at properties in the CMO zone?
That I'm not sure of.
And. Do you, couple other questions, do you have a a planning opinion as to whether, given that. A conditional use variance is being requested, whether. The C variances are subsumed into the D variance, or whether in fact they they should be reviewed on their own.
Well, as you know, and just for the board's edification, the, if this were a D one use variance. Then the C variances would likely be subsumed, in this case, as we said, we are looking at the the SICA tests. And it's a conditional use. Let me just think about that for one second, I would say that. In this particular case, I think I would, I would lean towards, I would lean towards no. Simply because it, when we're looking at a use variance, we're talking about standards that are applied to that use. That aren't necessarily intended to be applied to that use. In this case, we're looking at C variances. That apply to this zone as a whole, which I think takes into account that houses of worships. Could potentially locate here by virtue of them being a conditional use. So. I would lean towards, I would lean towards no unless council has some. Different opinion from the legal standpoint.
I appreciate your answer, and then. You're, or at least my understanding is that last week. That the applicant appeared before the Historic Preservation Commission for the township. And and there was a a recommendation. Issued by the HPC to to this board, along with some documentation. That the HPC asked to be forwarded to this board, including, you know, a report. Actually, you know, two, two separate reports, are you familiar with either one of those documents?
I'm not.
Are you familiar with any recommendation the HP, that the HPC made or didn't make with regard to this application?
I'm not.
I have nothing further, thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman, so, once again, anything further from the board in terms of questions for Mr. Flynn? Okay. So now I'll open it up to questions. From the audience, okay, now. These are questions only for Mr. Flynn regarding his testimony, okay? I want to keep this on point and moving along, we do have twenty-eight people in attendance here, so we could have a bunch of questions. That being said, there will be no comments, so please make sure that everything you say is phrased as a question. And please do not get repetitive, if you hear Mr. Flynn answer the question, please move on and do not badger him. So with that, we'll open up to the first person here, I think it's. Somia Jeria, Jeram.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you. No. Now you're muted. No, sorry, we can't hear you, see if you can fix your problem, we're gonna move on to the next person. Is that Christine?
Yeah, Christine.
Hear me?
I can hear you and I can see you, Mr. Lama, what would be your question this evening?
My name is Solomon Lama, S A L O M O N, Lama, L A M A. Reside at four thirty-eight Milburn Avenue. You testified that. The access on Bodwell Terrace is going to be closed off except for emergency vehicles. What is the purpose of that, and two, what would be? The result of that, other aspects of the application?
Sure, so. That 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 part, that portion of my testimony was really just recalling something that the engineer said, I don't. Necessarily have the engineering expertise to to give the how or the or the why of that.
Thank you.
Maybe just to try to be as responsive as you can be to that question, Matt, so from a planning standpoint. From a planning standpoint, and any potential detriments to the neighborhood, particularly along Bodwell, what's the significance of. In your view, diminishing vehicular ingress and egress to and from Bodwell directly?
Right, so as I said, there is existing a driveway that connects to Bodwell Terrace, which will. Essentially be removed and be replaced with an emergency only driveway to Bodwell, so obviously. That will only be used in case of emergency, in case an emergency vehicle has to enter the site. But substantially taking cars. That would, that would existing be coming in and out of that site and taking that away from. From that aspect of the circulation.
And where would those vehicles be redirected to?
Sure, so those vehicles would have to enter off of Milburn Avenue. Thank you.
Anything, anything further, Michelle?
Nope.
Thank you. Next, we'll be moving to Sergey K.
Yes, hi, my name is Sergey Koralov. K O R A L O V. And I'm at eleven Bodwell Terrace.
Good question.
My question for Mr. Flynn, since he testified about the hardships of the applicant. In terms of securing a appropriately sized lot, given that the request for variance is from. Essentially from point eight-five acres to three acres and testified that there are only. Two dozen lots out of a sixty-four hundred properties in Melbourne that need this requirement. It is my understanding that the current lots are actually three lots to be combined. So, could you expand and say how many? Lots, neighboring lots in Melbourne would actually satisfy the size if you combine three lots?
Uh, so. I think this answers your question, I I located just based on my analysis that there were about eighteen properties that are zoned. Residential in Milburn Township that comply with that three acre. Lot size. So obviously, I, go ahead.
Right, but this is single properties, here you're talking about three lots that are next to each other that are being combined. And that's what giving you still a lot size that doesn't meet even one third of the requirement. So how many lots if. You shopped around, basically had three neighbor, three neighboring lots that would satisfy that requirement?
My analysis only looked at single lots that met that requirement, not not the possibility of of. Lots that could be combined to to meet that because. That analysis would would frankly go on forever because you could combine any number of lots to to meet that requirement.
Okay, so perhaps one, another question, you, when you were mentioning and explaining the SICA test, so. Point number two is the potential impact. On on the residential neighborhood, so your statement was that the Melbourne side of a lot. Is not at the heart of a residential neighborhood, but that's just one side of a lot, the second side of a lot, I believe is no, is. The Bodwell Terrace, when many of the individuals on the call, I imagine reside. Is it not fair to say that that statement then rings around the false for Bodwell Terrace?
So, the the requirement for a house of worship is that it has to front on a primary, secondary or collector roadway. So hypothetically, any property that fronts on one of those roadways could potentially also front on another lot if it's a corner lot. So I don't necessarily think that the ordinance intends to prohibit corner lots from having a house of worship. As long as you have frontage along one of those main roads, which in this case we do.
Right, but the potential impact doesn't speak to just one side of a property, but presumably in the test, the SICA test, there's a potential impact. On all four sides of a lot, and in this case, at least two of the sides face. Residential property, meaning they would have a substantial impact on the. On the nature of the neighborhood, is that not a true statement?
Uh, well, I would say no, because when we look at the intent of the ordinance, from at least an aesthetic standpoint. When we look at those main roadways that the ordinance wants this land use to front on. My testimony was that Milburn Avenue is one of those roadways and it has non-residential. Uh, non-residential properties along it, so again, hypothetically, any of the properties that are located on one of those main roadways. Will likely have residential properties behind it, next to it, simply because we are in a residential zone. But again, we're not looking at a use that's prohibited in residential zones, this use is actually intended to be located. Alongside residential, so I don't think it's, I think it's built into the zoning ordinance that this will not have a substantial impact. The use itself on 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 other residential properties, it's intended to co-mingle with those types of land uses.
And by those other examples that you're giving and the other properties that may be facing Melbourne. And are not the ones that are asking for exception to the ordinance along every single parameter, which it seems this one is.
So I'm sorry, what's the question?
The question is whether, when you apply the very test that you're saying, whether this actually, you went through the four points. Asked stating whether the interest basically overrides any current government interest or private interest, whether the second point. Now, whether a potential impact actually has any impact on residential neighborhood, you. Conveniently dismiss it as being not at the heart of a residential neighborhood, which I would argue this lot is. Yet when you talk about it, you immediately say no. This is. A practice, oh, this is a house of worship that is intended and can fit into the neighborhood. It can, but not on a point five, point eight-five acre lot.
Yeah, so my response to that is that, again, the houses of worship are intended to be located alongside residential in this zone. In all residential zones. And the fact that we are in an undersized lot, I think is proportional to the scale of development that we're proposing, again. Not requiring a variance for lot coverage or building coverage, so in terms of the scale of development being on that undersized property. The the proposed building is is proportional to the size of that law, and I think in that regard. It's it's not like we are, it's not like the applicant is proposing a overly sized building and totally disregarding. The lot area of requirements and proposing a building that could be as large as a, as a, as a building on a three acre property. I would have a totally different opinion on on a building like that, but I think in this case, the scale of the project is. Is um, is a mitigating factor.
Yeah, I think the rest of it I would save, I guess, already for the comments period because. I'm not sure that that quite answers. Both, the points in the SICA test, including whether the balance is actually outweighing the benefits, because you also said a completely minimal impact. On the neighborhood, which I don't sincerely agree with. So, but I guess that is saved for the comment section.
Thank you very much, any further questions? Sergey?
Uh, not for this time, thank you.
Okay. We'll be moving on to, I think it's a pretty, the next person.
Can you hear me?
Yep, please turn on your camera. Thank you very much, your name and address for the record and your question.
My name is Prithi Goswami, G O S W A M I.
I reside on twenty-four Bodwell Terrace. I have two questions. My first question is, although you have specified that the current active driveway opening in Bodwell Terrace will only be used for the emergency purposes, no one can guarantee that people will be hanging around or walking around the Bodwell Terrace just because this plan has been, the plan is that a structure which needs three acre of land is getting befitted in a less than thirty percent of space. I would like to thank Mr. Simon for explaining the Sika balancing test so well. That's really helpful. Now, there are twenty-four children in Bodwell Terrace who belong to the age group of one year to thirteen years. The sizes of a property are small, and hence we have really small backyards, backyards and front yards. Because of this, our children have to play on the street. Having said that, we are also blessed with a dead-end street. So as of now, after my twelve-years-old come home from school, he just lets me know that he's going out to play. And although cautious, I'm still at peace when he's playing out on our street. Once this development starts, there is no way, no way, we'll be feeling this way.
Do you have a question?
Play outside. Yes, I'm coming to that right away.
Okay.
So we are losing this peace of mind and compromising the mental health, well-being, and safety of our children and stripping away the privilege of getting to play in our block because in this entire short-hills Milburn area, we don't have a piece of land where we can have an appropriate building. So my question to you is, with reference to Sika Balance Test, how is this development not absolutely detrimental for all of our twenty-four, twenty-four living children living in the, in and around our block?
Okay, so if I understand the question, it, to me, it sounds like the, the question is regarding the use itself, the use of a house of worship in a residential zone. Again, just falling back on my testimony with the last member of the public, this is a zone that anticipates a house of worship, co-mingled with residential uses. It's, it's not a prohibited use, it's a conditionally permitted use. And I think that, that, that speaks to the fact that this land use can function safely, efficiently, it can fit in with the neighborhood. It's built into the, to the zoning code that this land use belongs in residential zones.
My question was very specific regarding to the Sika balancing test.
So in terms of the, the detriments that are caused by this land use, that, that would be my answer, is that this is, this land use is intended to, to co-locate with other residential uses. And I don't think that, I think it's better to have a small-scale house of worship that's ten thousand square feet, give or take, as opposed to a, a larger-scale house of worship, which is necessarily what the ordinance really contemplates to be located here on larger lots. So I would say that the size and scale of this house of worship is appropriate considering the, the location, the proximity to other residential properties, and the use itself is, is well-vetted in the zoning ordinance as a, as a permitted conditional use. It's, it's intended to locate with other residential properties. So having said that-
Does not answer my question. Am I allowed to be repetitive like Mr. Flynn is being? Because I also have two repetitive questions. He is answering the same ones, giving me the same answer. That does not assure me the safety of my child and the children on the block. I'm talking about specifically about Sika Balance Test where I am claiming, and I'm saying that it's detrimental for the well-being of our children. And you, you're not answering my question. I would really beg you to answer that question because that changes our life, that changed my kid's life. Please understand the seriousness of that. I'm not here for a political reason. I reside in this property. I have children. There are many children living in this property, girls and boys, and I'm talking about their safety. Please respect that and answer accordingly without being repetitive. We have spent hours together to get this answer.
My answer is the same. This is not a prohibited use in a residential zone. This is an area where houses of worship and residential uses are, are desired in terms of the zoning ordinance. It's not something that is inharmonious or it, to uses that don't work together. These are two uses that work well together.
Matt, let me, let me ask a follow-up question that maybe will help more directly, I, I hope, and think, address this woman's concern as I understand it. Ma'am, I, I believe you had said that currently you have children living with you who kind of check in and say, you know, Mom, I'm going out to play, and then they are kind of out and about along Bodwell Terrace. Is that correct?
I won't call them out and about, but yes, they are on the dead-end street playing, and we are aware, and we are around, yes.
And you're, and you're concerned that the introduction of a house of worship at this location might present them with risks or, or dangers that they're not currently facing now in terms of just the ability to kind of be in that general area outside, outside the house along Bodwell, is that right?
I won't say precisely that, but there are going to be many people whom we don't know at all hanging around on Bodwell Terrace. We don't know these people.
So Matt, I guess-
I, I will not feel safe, like, are there are people whom I don't know? They're there, and my kids are playing, and that's not a peaceful situation, a peaceful situation for us.
Yeah, Mr. Levine, let's just be careful about like questioning this, this, this question.
I'm just trying to facilitate getting a more direct answer to, to what I, I thought she was, she was driving at, and try to assist Mr. Flynn.
Well, I think, I think your question also maybe outside the purview of, of this, of this witness. So you said you had a second question. Do you have that second question that you would like to ask?
Well, if this is outside the preview, then maybe that will also, also be outside the preview, but I definitely would like to ask that question at some point of time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, next, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
By the way, I haven't gotten the answer to my question, so I would actually leave it to the board to decide whether I'm done or not, because I definitely did not have the answer to my question.
Okay, noted. Leslie Schulman is next.
Sorry, video. Sorry, I'm trying to start my video.
Sure.
Okay, good, how are you? On Bodwell Terrace, I think I'm hinging on Prithi's question. What I think she's asking is, they're saying that the driveway on Bodwell is going to be for restricted emergency use, but how do they, they can't guarantee that, that people aren't going to park and walk in there for pickup and all that kind of stuff? I think that's what the concern is, that Bodwell Terrace is going to be the secondary parking lot for this, because there's nowhere to park on Milburn Avenue. So how do they guarantee that that emergency access is really just emergency access?
Yeah, I believe that there's going to be a fence that's restricting the access to that emergency, that emergency.
Well, then how does a fire truck get in there?
It's not really, it's, the plans show, it's not really a fence, it's a chain that's supported by posts that's collapsible so that if an emergency vehicle has to get in there, they can, they can basically drive through it without damaging the vehicle. It's the common type of mechanism that's used. It, it's installed in emergency-only access to prevent routine use of it in anything other than an emergency situation. And that, that was shown on the plans and testified to by the engineer.
Okay, so you don't feel that people are going to be parking and then walking through there to pick up their kids from Hebrew school or whatever? That's not going to happen?
No, I mean, the, the site itself is going to be policed by the, by the applicant's staff. So if, that wouldn't be an issue, no.
But that's leaving it up to the applicant. That's not a town rule or a regulation where people can't do that, because you can't park on Milburn Avenue. So you're telling me that the High Center is going to regulate what happens on our street?
I mean, I'm sure that the applicant could stipulate that nobody could park within that emergency access driveway so that it would, so that car, vehicles and users of this-
No, I think what we're talking about is people on this, like people parking on the street and then walking up, like any, any school. People park on the local street and walk up and get their children. I think it's going to turn Bodwell Terrace. I think that's a concern of a lot of people that we, and we can't control it once it's there, that it's going to be a major, major traffic and major people picking up and parking and backing up and, because Milburn Avenue is not suitable for that. And I'm sure there's going to be a driveway in front that people can do that, but I really think it's going to end up on our street, and I don't think there's any way to protect ourselves once it's there. So is there anything in place besides the, themselves regulating themselves within the township or any rule that's stopping them from doing that?
From dropping people off and allowing them to-
No, from parking on the street and parking on Bodwell Terrace and using that emergency access as the walkway into the temple to get their, whether to go to services or to get their children or whatever.
Well, the intent of that emergency access aisle is actually twofold, not only for emergencies, but also it is the intent of the applicant to have users of the site to walk up and, and to use that as a walkway, simply because the driveway along Milburn Avenue is, is, is very steep.
Right, so I think our concern is, so where are they parking when they walk up to use that accessway?
Right, well, the testimony on the record is that the twenty-five spaces proposed is adequate based on the anticipated demand of the site. So there wouldn't be any need, if somebody wanted to, the easiest way to access the site, and again, I'm not an engineer, but I would, the easiest way to access the site would be to park in that parking lot and then walk in from there. That's the most direct way, because the, the, the entrance of the building is actually oriented towards the cemetery. So if you're looking at the site from Milburn, it actually faces the left, not the street. So I think that there is incentive for people to, to park in the, in the parking lot if they have a car. If they, if they don't have a car, perhaps-
How many, sorry, how many seats are in the temple? How many, how many people does a sanctuary hold?
It's on the plans, ma'am.
Yeah, I think one hundred percent.
What I'm trying to say is I don't think twenty-five spots covers that. That's all, I'm, I'm just trying to be upfront and say, the concern of the people on the street, one of the many concerns is the parking and the going back and forth. That's, and I don't really feel you're addressing that. So I just didn't know if there was a, it is a question, it's not a comment, what, what the centers, what, what we can do to alleviate the parking so people are not parking on our street to walk up to the temple.
And, and ma'am, if I could, if you've been following these, these proceedings all along, you'll-
I have for like twenty years, yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, the rabbi had provided testimony in connection with this application with regard to the numbers of people in the congregation, the ten, the number of people in the school, the days of operation, the total number of people that will routinely access the site, the additional numbers that they would anticipate during the high holidays. And, you know, the, the, some of that extensive testimony was that in all but a handful of, of occasions in connection with the high holidays, that the twenty-five spaces for onsite parking that they're provided will be more than ample to accommodate the people that will be using the facility. And when, on those few days of the year when they do anticipate an overflow, that they have investigated additional off-site parking opportunities, both at the high school across Milburn Avenue, as well as at Saint Rose, agreement, speaking with the pastor.
I, I don't think anybody's concerned about the high holidays. That's a couple of days a year. It's not a big deal. I think they're concerned about the day-to-day of what's going to happen. You know, because there are things that go on in the temple. There's Hebrew school, there's forum, but miss, like, there's a lot of stuff on the, on the daily that goes on, and they might not be sitting there all day within the twenty-five spots, but there's a lot of pickup and a lot of drop-off. That was my point.
I just, I didn't want to leave you with the impression that we, you know, didn't provide testimony as to that. It just hasn't been through this witness.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Schulman?
No.
Can I have a question?
Thank you very much. Uh, next, we'll be moving on to Yassir M T I's.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyways, Yassir M T I's, and I'm resident of nine Bodwell Terrace. Y S I R, and last name M T I M P I A Z. Thank you very much. There were a lot of insight on the Sika balance test and restorative data. My question to Mr. Flynn is this, are you familiar with the Milburn Township zoning laws, rules, regulations?
I am.
Okay, can you, from my understanding, define, tell me where this proposed site is, which zone this, this is in, will be in?
Sure, this is the R six residential.
Okay, can you help me understand the subclause A and subclause B of the R six? I think it's six zero six, if I'm not mistaken. Can you help me understand what this, what those clauses are, what, what those clause says?
I'm, I'm just the sub, uh, which, which part am I looking at here?
You are looking at the, where the township zoning's, can you define, help me understand, understand six oh six two A and B? In your understanding, in your understanding of the laws, the zoning laws of the Milburn Township, what does those clauses means?
Sure, so basically, clause A of section six oh six dot two is the purpose of residential zones R three, R four, R five, and R six. Clause B tells you that the permitted principal use is single-family dwelling. And clause C tells you what the accessory uses are.
No, no, my question was only for the clause A and B, so you answered my question. Are you aware of how many existing houses are there in the proposed site for this house of worship?
There are two existing dwellings.
Are you aware that there is also a third plot which was demolished there at one point in time? There was a house and that was demolished, I think. It's leveled down now. You are not aware of that?
I'm not aware, no.
Are you aware any clauses in the township, Milburn Township zoning law which prohibits to join more than one laws and make one purpose, like for housing or whatever? Are you aware of any such clause?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so but do you understand that by asking for, to build a house of worship on this proposed site, basically you're asking to combine three laws into one and then build the smaller scale, so-called, what you are defining as a smaller scale house of worship?
Correct.
You agree with that, okay. Now, do we, do also, you also testified in your statement somewhere that someone from the traffic things testified that there will not be any detrimental impact on the residential traffic area. Have you read that statement and do you recall the name of that traffic expert?
Um, I listened to his testimony.
Did you know his name?
Uh, counsel, help me out. I can't remember.
Mike Lonzo Fama. Just to be clear, just to be clear, sir, he didn't, he was not qualified, he was not testifying in that capacity as a traffic engineer. He was-
I understand that. I understand that. I understand. Uh, there is another thing with you saying that if we, if this house of worship is built, the proposed site, do you know what exactly the location is? What is in front of the property, what is on the right and left and behind this property? Are you aware of that? What is in front of this property?
In front of this property, directly in front, is some, some detached dwellings, some detached residential dwellings, as well as a, what I think is a private roadway that leads to the Board of Education, a facility that's related to the Board of Education, but also that roadway provides access to the high school.
You're talking about on the opposite side of Milburn Avenue, Mike, ma'am?
I, I believe-
Opposite side of this proposed site. Opposite, I was asking about the opposite side of this proposed site.
Right, so opposite Milburn Avenue, those are the uses.
No, I'm talking about Milburn Avenue is the roadway, right? Milburn, you, you made a statement that there are a lot of commercial properties alongside the Milburn Highway. Milburn Highway is long, it's more than one mile. So I'm just talking specifically about this proposed site. What is in front of this proposed site, exactly in front of this proposed site?
Um, I mean, I, I think I can, I think I can answer your, at least where I think this question is going. To the left of this property is a non-residential cemetery, and- And to all other sides are residential uh properties, I think that's kind of where you're going. My testimony is that Milburn Avenue itself as a whole is not a. Purely residential roadway, it's act, it actually has some, I I, as everybody here knows.
Yeah, but we cannot, yeah, miss, sorry, sorry to cut too much, I hope you finish, just finish whatever you're saying, sorry about that.
All I was saying was that my testimony was that Milburn Avenue is not purely residential, as you travel along it. Uh, it is um and not not far off from this site, um, although not adjacent to the site, there are non-residential uses. Um, so Milburn Avenue itself is characterized by residential and the non-residential uses, depending on obviously where you are on the roadway.
Yeah, but would you agree, you just said this, but would you agree with this, and I'm just repeating it, would you agree with this, that this proposed site is? In the middle of the residential area, except for on the one side where there is a cemetery, other than that, it's all residential. Do you agree with this, Tim?
I would actually say uh no, and the reason I would say no is because, at least when I think of uh being in the heart of a residential area or being in the middle of a residential area. Um, I would think of properties that are. That have more uh residentially zoned properties. Around us and for more distance, and what I mean by that is, if we're looking at the subject site, you don't have to go very far down Milburn Avenue to come across a non-residential zone. When I think of being in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I would think of, if you went. Five minute walk in any direction, you would still be in a residential neighborhood. Um, to me, this is actually at the edge of a residential neighborhood.
Okay, so let me repeat my question again, what exactly is in front of this property? As I said, yeah, Milburn, Milburn Avenue is one mile long road, you cannot make a general general statement that Milburn is all commercial. You are making.
Wait, 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 don't, you get, you just, you gotta ask the questions, Mr. Flynn's gonna answer the questions, that's the way.
My question is simple, what is in front of the proposed site?
He answered that question earlier, I was.
He's twisting his words, I'm just asking him that.
No, 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 the board will consider his words for what they are.
Just to correct the record, my testimony was not that Milburn Avenue is all non-residential, my testimony was that Milburn Avenue is. A mix of residential and the non-residential, albeit at this specific area, uh, Milburn is uh mostly residential, if we look at.
Mr. Chairman, I will take, as far as I am concerned, I will take his answer, non-answer, he did not answer my question, but anyway, I'm moving on to the. Next one, I will also raise the same concern with my other neighbor, Kitty and Leslie and uh others raised today, tonight, and before. You did not answer that, but anyway, uh, uh, I will, I will leave this to, I don't have any other question for for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, bye.
Next up, we have Jack Gordon.
Good evening, Mr. Gordon, you had a camera on there, there you go.
Good evening, and thank you, um, Mr. Flynn, I don't wanna be confrontational. But I do have a couple of questions, and if you will bear with me, permit me to ask them, and I invite you to answer them. Are you on board?
I am.
The questions, Mr. Gordon, please, thanks.
Okay, um, following up, I think on some of the questioning of Mr. Intias. Uh, are you aware of the fact that in nineteen ninety-four? Um. Your client uh made an application to the planning board to combine lots four thirty-seven and four thirty-nine? Yes or no?
No.
So I take it you're not aware of the fact that at that time, the planning board. Made it determination that merging the two properties would be, and I am now quoting. Inconsistent with the residential character of the neighborhood, is that true?
I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't know the context of that quote, and I wasn't around for it, I was. I was a couple of months old.
Okay, well, at that time. That application was filed and the planning board made a determination. And that determination is part of the application package that is before this zoning board today. Are you aware of that fact?
No.
Mr. Chairman, before we go too far, just I I thought you had instructed all the witnesses that the questions were supposed to be directed to the scope of the testimony offered by the witness.
Yeah, I agree, um, this, Mr. Gordon, to try to keep this on point, or, you know, you don't need to filibuster here, I'd like to to ask questions regarding his testimony that he gave this evening.
Craig, I I am not filibustering, I'm talking about an application that was before this board, and if you look at pages thirty-two to thirty-four. Of this very same application.
Jack, he got your answer, he doesn't know.
Okay, great. So let me ask a couple of other questions then. We talked a little bit about Ray's Judicata and collateral estoppel, are you aware of the fact? That this same board. More than twenty years ago considered a virtually identical application. And this board found that, I am quoting, the property cannot sustain the proposed use.
Mr. Chairman, again, please, this is ground that Mr. Gordon has covered with every witness that we've had, is not within the scope of this te- this uh witness's testimony. And in all fairness to this witness, we had two other witnesses over the course of two other hearings testify extensively as to the Ray Street account issue, he didn't come here to retrace that ground again. And I would submit it shouldn't be retraced as part of any, you know, cross-examination of his testimony.
Well, I, Mr. Chairman, can I try for a second? I I I think, I think the response is a little bit of a mixed bag, which is, first of all, I I think that Mr. Flynn already testified that he didn't review the resolution. And he didn't review the plans relating to the two thousand and one application, so I think, Mr. Gordon, you. Received your answer a couple of hours ago, maybe an hour ago, with regard to um Mr. Flynn's understanding of the prior uh application. Uh, at the same time, to the extent that Mr. Gordon is asking Mr. Flynn questions about the contents of the application. Or the testimony uh provided by him or even other witnesses that bears on professional planning testimony, I think it's fair game.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, Mr. Flynn, do you have a response?
No, no, Mr. Gordon, I I I already, you asked him about the resolution, he said he didn't read the resolution, next question.
Okay, fair enough, so um you testified tonight that the um. Bodwell Terrace access is intended for emergency use. And that there might be some pedestrian access to and from. And Leslie Shulman asked about where the cars are gonna park, do you recall that?
Yes.
Okay, are you aware of the fact that your stormwater management report? Submitted in connection with this application says that the purpose of. The emergency access is not only to lower the barrier. For vehicular access, but to, and I am quoting from page five of the S M R. Um, to provide pedestrian sidewalk access, close quote, from Baldwin Terrace. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, I think I hit on that in my testimony, I think it was testified to by the architect at the last hearing, and I was just echoing. Uh, his testimony regarding that pedestrian uh aspect.
So, isn't it fair to say? That if we are providing pedestrian access from Baldwin Terrace into the proposed. Shule. That. Those vehicles parking will be parking on Baldwin Terrace.
Um, no, because I think that any good site plan is going to have some type of integration with the existing uh. Sidewalks or pedestrian realm, and I would say that, you know, I think it was already testified to that the driveway is is unsafe for pedestrian access, which extends from Milburn Avenue. So to have some type of integration uh with with, you know, walkability, I think. I think it's, I I don't think that you can equate that to to vehicular uh circulation.
So where are the vehicles gonna park when people are gonna be walking through the pedestrian access from Baldwin Terrace? Onto your client's property, where are they gonna park if they're not parking on Baldwin Terrace?
Mr. Gordon, extensive testimony has been provided as to that.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I'm not really sure, Mr. Flynn knows where people are gonna park, so. You know, this, these, these questions are are difficult to answer, so do you have something a little more concrete regarding his testimony?
Okay. Where are?
You can ask, you can ask him, you can ask him. Who are the intended users of that walkway? If he knows.
Okay, Rob, I will do that. If you know, Mr. Flynn, who are the intended users of the pedestrian access from Baldwin Terrace? To your client's proposed shule?
Yeah, I mean, these could be people that are walking to the facility, these could be people that are going to. Leave the facility and take a walk down Milburn Avenue to uh. Patronize uh an existing business on Milburn Avenue and leave their car in the parking lot at the facility. Um, you know, I I think from a planning standpoint, I think it makes sense to not trap people in this property and not give them a way to walk out of it. Um, and that would be my response.
Have you been on Baldwin Terrace, have you seen the number of children who live and thrive on that street?
Yes.
Have you seen the block party that we had yesterday? Where we had forty kids walking up and down and running up and down Baldwin Terrace?
No.
Okay, are you aware that in two thousand two, twenty plus years ago? The the same board looked at the same application?
Sharon, haven't we, haven't we addressed this?
Yeah, I think Mr. Flynn's made it clear that he's not aware of that, Mr. Gordon.
Okay.
Or limited awareness of it.
My, my testimony was that I'm aware of that application, I haven't necessarily reviewed all of the documents that are related to that application. I know what the general nature of that application was, and it's my opinion that it is substantially dissimilar from the application before the board tonight.
Excellent, then that leads me to my next question, in what way or ways are? These applications dissimilar?
Again, from a physical planning standpoint, we're talking about a building that is is new. The prior application was a retrofit of an existing building, they're two totally different buildings.
Okay, but you still have the same issue with respect to minimum lot size, yes?
Yes.
So you're looking for a variance of more than three times for minimum lot size? Is that true? Um, you're looking for um front yard setbacks and on both sides, on both Milburn Ave and. Bodwell Terrace.
Yes.
Correct? And you're you're looking at, you know, buffers, neighbors' buffers. You you've got seven point nine feet proposed versus twenty-five feet. This was considered by this same board and turned down, you're aware of that, yes?
I'm not aware of the uh the residential buffer distances. That were proposed as at the last uh, with the last application.
The one twenty years ago, correct? Okay, um, and you're talking about parking setbacks. That at the same time were seven point nine versus twenty feet. And that was turned down twenty years ago, you're aware of that, are you not?
I'm not aware of the specific uh dimensions and. Measurements on the on the site plan from the application that you're referring to twenty years ago.
Okay, and you are aware of the fact that you're, you're. And you gave so much testimony about, oh, well, we're really so much in compliance with what would be required for a. Single family dwelling in the area, but for our purposes, we have a very small house of worship. But you would agree that at a minimum, despite what was. Put before this board in terms of the initial application, which was one hundred parking spots, you're still admitting that you needed at least fifty-two, is that correct?
Yes, we are requesting parking variance for twenty-five spaces versus fifty-two.
Okay, and you're aware of the fact that more than twenty years ago, this same board said, no, it it's not sufficient.
No, I'm not aware.
Okay. And did you know that permitting a house of worship in a residential zone on a point eight four or a point eight five, as you've now recalculated it? Lot. Was found by this board to represent, and I'm quoting, a substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Because of the minimum lot size.
No. I'm not aware of that resolution. Am I frozen or is that him?
No, I think Mr. Gordon's frozen. And. Let's move on.
I'm gonna bring, um, I I see Salma, Jerry, she was the first one we we brought and we lost her, so I'm gonna bring her over before I know uh Mr. Lama and.
And 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 Eileen, before we're done with the public question, we should see if Mr. Gordon can come back if he has more questions.
Yeah, Mr. Gordon, if you can hear us, please either log out, log back in, and we'll bring you back, so.
Uh, well, that person disappeared already.
Right, they disappeared, so.
Yeah, there she is, there she is.
She is, she's back.
We're gonna hear her first, we lose her again.
You never say that in a live meeting, there she is, there she is.
Hi.
We're back, we hear you this time.
Okay, that's good, uh, sorry about the early confusion, uh, but I am Sonia Jara. And I'm a resident on Bodwell Terrace seventeen, to be precise, and I had a couple of questions for Mr. Flynn. Um. Is that okay, I go?
Yeah, absolutely, please, please proceed, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, so one, my first question was, uh, Mr. Flynn mentioned a few times, and this was mentioned previously as well. Uh, that this is a small house of worship and that anticipated demand is only going to be for a certain. for a certain number of people. My question is, how can you tell that there are only going to be a certain number of people allowed? And especially like, how can you say any more than fifty people, for example, are not going to be allowed into the temple? How can you say any more than, I don't know, fifty cars uh are not going to be well, twenty-five cars only are allowed at the uh at the parking lot? But how can you say that there are only going to be a certain number of people that are allowed at the temple, as long as there's standing room only, and I'm very familiar with temples, with houses of worship? Uh, especially festivals, events, there's always going to be standing room only. How can you control that demand?
So.
I'm not, I'm not sure this is the right witness for that. I mean, the rabbi is the one that testified in depth as to what the specific uses are, what the attendance is, what the past attendance has been, what the anticipated attendance will be. And Mr. Flynn has offered his planning testimony, you know, based upon.
Yeah, but he mentioned.
I would agree with you, okay, so uh, Mrs. Sharon, let's try to keep it to the testimony that Mr. Flynn gave. There's.
Yeah, I I I had the question because he mentioned that it was going to be a small-scale house of worship which needs a conditional approval and not the actual religious house of worship. So I I my question was, how can you tell it's going to be a small-scale house of worship and not uh? How can you control, how can you say what the demand is going to be? How can you be, how can you say it's going to be small scale? Uh, anyway, uh, my second question was uh that he, Mr. Flynn mentioned that uh he compared a few different other houses of worship and that they all have probably had different variances. My question is this property, this application has a lot of requisite variances, pretty much in every uh, in every aspect, really. Does any other house of worship in this area need all all of those variances to function as a house of worship? And then most of those already grandfathered in? Or is, was any of the other houses of worship recently approved, or at least after these zoning uh laws were uh made?
So we don't need a variance for several of the conditions of the uh house of worship conditional use uh conditions. We don't need a variance for frontage on a primary, secondary collector roadway. We don't need a variance for minimum lot frontage. We don't need a variance for minimum lot depth. Uh, we don't need a variance for vehicular access um uh on something other than a local street. We don't need a variance for lot coverage. We don't need a variance uh for side yard setbacks. Um, and we don't need a variance for building height. All of those conditions are um conditions that are specific to the conditional use of house of worship, so we only need variances for very few of that list, I would say. Um, and I think to answer your question in the most direct way and without going too far off in 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 some analysis of of comparison, uh, the amount of variances that we're seeking is not far off from the amount of variances that, based on my analysis, many of the other houses of worships also needed. Um, many of the house of worship.
Is that also true, or would need if they were to seek to expand their facilities? Is that also true, man?
Correct, based on lot geometry, if if any expansion was needed, that those variances would be would be needed.
Uh, okay, so does that also include what, because Mr. Jack Gordon couldn't finish his uh questioning, but uh he mentioned that there were a lot of, like, for example, twenty-five, you need fifty-two parking lots, but you only have twenty-five. And then the buffer, residential buffer, and basically, uh, I'm not a lawyer, so I I don't know all of the, I can't mention all of the variances, all of the uh variances you need. I don't know if that was a conditional use or a regular use, but are you saying that all of the existing houses of worship in the area that probably are already grandfathered in? Like, they were built, they have existed for some time, at least the ones that, for example, St. Stephen's, I think, has been here for a long time, uh, so has uh St. Rose of Lima. Uh, so are you saying that all of those other houses of worship also don't meet the requirements for parking lots uh for residential buffers, for all of those other uh variances that Mr. Gordon mentioned?
What I'm saying is that my analysis was based purely on the spatial arrangement of, at least from what I could observe, uh, this the spatial arrangement of the buildings on these properties, as well as the lot area of these properties, um, as well as the lot depth, the the frontage, et cetera. These are all numbers that are somewhat easy to at least estimate. Um, and I don't, my analysis did not focus on the legal backdrop of were approvals for those deviations granted? It didn't focus on whether these buildings have been here since eighteen fifty, prior to zoning. My analysis was simply focused on if that were, I guess, a new development. Uh, these are the variances that it would require.
But don't you think you have to sort of take that into account if there were new developments that were you can't really compare some, a structure that has been here for uh a century and compare that to something that is going to be built uh in the future?
No, because basically the reason that that was part of my testimony was simply to say that the requirements for houses of worship are very stringent. And based on how stringent these requirements tend to be, um, there's very few lots available that that are even able to meet all of these requirements. And that's evident, I would say, based on the amount of houses of worship that I observed that are similarly um needing variances from these requirements. So the testimony was simply to say that the requirements are so stringent that um there's very few properties that this would be able to um that these conditions would be able to um be complied with.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add add a comment to that because I think we can move on. Uh, I think a lot of the residences were built around the temples, like, for example, St. Stephen's has been here for a long time, and the residences were sort of built around it. And since it is, it wasn't the other way down, so what we're proposing here at the Kai Center is actually the opposite. So it doesn't apply uh really, but let's move on to uh, I want to uh again mention Leslie and others uh questions as well, and I want to add some of context to it, and hopefully you can maybe answer.
Do you have a specific question for for Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, so please get to that, thank you.
Yeah, uh, so the question is that it's twofold. One is that you mentioned that the the vehicles, the cars uh that will be coming in, they'll be coming in from Melbourne Avenue. Do you know that there are two new developments that are coming in on both sides of Melbourne, or on both sides of the Kai Center? One at the Wells Fargo and one on upper upper Melbourne Avenue?
No.
Okay. Do you know that there is already a traffic problem at the uh intersection or intersection of Baldwin Terrace and Melbourne Avenue?
No.
Have you been on Barnet Terrace?
Yes.
Have you been to the to the end of the street, the dead end?
Yes.
Do you know that if you park, if people park on both sides, there is only way for one car to go across the street? And then it's very hard to turn around?
No.
What you, as a planner, what do you think would be the impact of? You may not, you may not be the right person to answer this question, but I am not sure who it is. But since you mentioned it, I'm asking you anyway. What would be the impact of the increased traffic? There's going to be a lot of apartments on both sides of Melbourne Avenue. On both sides of the Kai Center, the proposed Kai Center on Melbourne Avenue. And Duncan Street and Baldwin Terrace are dead ends. On the other side is the hu- uh the high school, and then on the other side, farther side, there's the Short Hills Apartments. And then you have old the St. Rose of Lima Church, which is much farther away.
Mr. Sharon, Mr. Sharon, I I really think that's a question for a traffic engineer, it's beyond the scope.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, Mr. Flynn did not give testimony regarding traffic tonight, so uh, his opinion on this would be outside the scope of of his testimony.
Okay, all right. I'll end with my last, and then I'm, if again, if this is out of scope, just let me know, and I'll I'll capicar. Uh, to add on to Miss uh Leslie Schillman's point, uh, when, during high school events, when high school is in session, when there are events in downtown, et cetera, what people do is they park on Baldwin Street, Baldwin Terrace, and also Duncan Street, all the neighboring streets, and then they just walk down to the high school, walk down to downtown. What is prohibiting people who go the people are going to worship, the house of worship, to not, to stop from parking on Baldwin Terrace and then walking down? I understand it's a, there are there's going to be a a fence or some sort of chain link that prevents cars from getting into the house of worship from Baldwin Terrace? But what is preventing them from parking onto Baldwin Terrace or at least looking for parking on Baldwin Terrace? They might not be available parking, but you have cars coming in, going to the end of the street, the dead end, and then trying to find a way back because there is no parking. What is preventing that from not happening?
Look, that that is really traffic expert traffic testimony. All I'll say to that, and again, I'm not a traffic expert, I'm not an engineer, all I'll say to that is that people that are going to come to this facility are going to have a familiarity with the facility. They're going to know how to get into the parking lot. They're gonna know the parking lot exists. They're gonna be going there every however often the congregation or or facility meets. Um, so to the extent that you're not going to have people driving around, wondering where to park and going to the end, once they go to the end of Baldwin Terrace, they're likely not going to do it again, but again, that that's, I know it's a very limited answer, but that's that's as much as I can uh give at this point.
Okay, thank you. I'll let somebody else take a look. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your questions. Uh, go back to Jack Gordon. See if we can get him finished up. I think you.
Uh, good evening.
How are you?
Not Jack Gordon.
No, no, you're not. Do I, can we have Jack Gordon back so we can finish up his questions? We'll get to you in a second, okay?
Thank you.
I thought we had finished him.
I don't know if it gets, because he because he froze, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, yeah, you're right, I forgot. Okay.
Mr. Gordon, did you have further questions? Because you froze there.
Yes, I am very, very apologetic about that. I moved my computer down to another space and I was not plugged into a charge and my computer died.
No worries.
Humble apologies. Yes, I did have a couple of questions for Mr. Flynn. Um, but not long, I promise. Uh, I will save most of my comments for to the end, but um, Matt, very quickly, um. So twenty years ago, a virtually identical application was presented and the zoning board at that time determined that building this on a point eight five, well, at the time, it was a point eight four combined lot, now it's somehow grown, but neither here nor there. It was a substantial impairment of the zone plan and the zoning order ordinance because of the minimum lot size, close work. So what changed? Why is this no longer a substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance?
Again, the differences between this application and the prior application, the specific differences, I I can't speak to, I'm not familiar with that prior application. There could have been there are likely many details of that application that I'm not familiar with that could have that likely had an impact on that quote that you're reading, so I I for my own protection, I'm not going to um answer that.
Okay, fair enough. Final question. Baldwin Terrace has literally dozens of pre-teens who use that street as an opportunity to play. Don't you think that if your client is going to use Baldwin Terrace as an ancillary parking lot where cars are pulling in, pulling out, turning around, and otherwise taking up the tranquility of that street? That you're increasing the public safety of the residents of my road?
If that were the case, maybe, but the the case is in this instance that our testimony is that that will not be the case.
Well, no, it it's, you may testify to what you want, but look at your application. If you look at the stormwater management report, it specifically states, quote, pedestrian sidewalk access from Baldwin Terrace to the High.
Yes, and my testimony was that that pedestrian access, I think, is a healthy part of any site plan that you can't safely traverse as a pedestrian down the proposed driveway. It's too steep, you're gonna have traffic in and out. It's a safer alternative for pedestrian movement. It doesn't necessarily mean that cars are going to park right outside that walkway. It's much easier if you have a car to park in the parking lot because the entrance is right there.
So you you also testified, and I'm I'm gonna be dumb in just a minute, I promise. But you testified that there aren't any other viable alternative sites with the adequate lot size for the High Center in the borough of Melbourne, did you not?
The testimony was that I did an analysis of pro- of of all the properties in the residential zones throughout the township of Melbourne and out of the over six thousand residential parcels, only eighteen of which had a lot area of at least three acres.
Okay, so there are other places where you could build this house of worship, yes?
That doesn't mean that they're available, it doesn't mean that they're vacant, it doesn't mean that they're for sale. It just means that there are very few properties that are able to comply with these conditions.
Okay.
All of the conditions, just to clarify, Matt.
I'm I'm actually missed.
Are just a lot, just to.
Mr. Levine. Mr. Levine.
Are you talking about?
I'm asking the witness. Hey, wait.
Guys, 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 guys. First of all, we have a court reporter that is trying to decipher what everyone's saying, so you can't speak over each other one at a time.
Mr. Levine, we have uh been on many meetings together because I've been on the planning board in Roseland for more than two decades. I know who you are, you know who I am, so it would be who view to let me ask your witness, Mr. Flynn, one final question.
All right, well, I I've tried to be as deferential as possible, Mr. Gordon, but I'll I'll be the judge of what would behoove me and what would not behoove me.
That being the case, would you mind terribly if I asked Mr. Flynn one final question?
One final question, that would be great.
Perfect. Are you aware of the fact, Mr. Flynn, that there is a three point three acre site currently on sale at one sixty-five Old Short Hills? Old Short Hills Mill Road in the borough of Melbourne?
No.
Okay, no further questions. Okay, no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. I guess we can get to Mr. Hesjusik here, so massacre that name.
Mr. Turner, sorry to interrupt. Could we possibly just have like a two-minute break?
Totally reasonable request. Um, I have 10:06, five minutes. We'll be back at 10:11.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Hello, Rabbi. Let me just make sure I'm muted.
How are we doing?
All right, folks, let's get rolling. So we're Mr. Steve, Mike, if you're there, Matt.
Why don't we, can Eileen take a roll call?
Yeah, we're going to have to do that, see if we can get Steve back. There he is. Muted, Eileen.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Jodi Sharma?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturist?
Here.
Shandru Harjani?
Here.
Ashley Abigdor? Jessica Glad?
Here.
Mike Claytoner?
Here. So we'll move forward with questioning for Mr. Hesjusik. If you could turn on your your camera for us and unmute yourself if you're there.
Good evening.
Good evening. Give us your name and address for the record, please, and your question for Mr. Flynn.
Yes, thank you. Wojtek Hajdukic, W O J T E K H A J D U C Z Y K residing at 15 Baldwin Terrace. So my question is, Mr. Flynn, what is the actual maximum capacity of the proposed building?
Well, in terms of, well, I'm not sure if that was put on the record by the rabbi. I can't remember, but um.
Look at the sheet for the plans. As the analysis of the seats in the sanctuary.
Right, in terms of seats, 136 seats.
136 seats?
Correct.
Okay, so that's 136 seats. There's a and the parking lot is 25 spaces, right? So that's over. So if you have a full service, that's over five individuals per parking space. Now you also have, I assume, the rabbi's car. You know, there any any staff that has to work at the at the house of worship during services. So that eats into the 25 spaces. So is it really your testimony that 25 spaces in the parking lot less the rabbi's space, less any other space that's required just for the operating of the house of worship is really sufficient to prevent overflow parking into Baldwin Terrace?
My testimony is that the the testimony of the rabbi as well as the engineer in terms of in terms of parking demand is that is that, yes, it's it's sufficient. And, you know, a planning analysis has to take into account the the expert witness that came for planning. And really, the planning analysis kind of just wraps all of that together to draw up planning conclusions. So I have to fall back on the prior witnesses and their testimony and their testimony was was that.
Is that true, Matt, with regard to both expert testimony and also just lay witness testimony, non-expert testimony with regard to operational detail?
Correct.
Thank you. So is it your belief that, you know, 20 five spaces, less those spaces required for the operation of the house of worship? It's i- is it reasonable to to rely, to be able to rely on, you know, that size lot to, you know, prevent overflow parking into Baldwin Terrace, putting aside what experts, what other experts may have said, but I mean, is that something that in your belief is is reasonable to assume that we'll always be able to rely on the parking lot to, you know, meet all the needs of the of the facility?
Again, as a planner, I have to take into account the expert testimony and the prior witnesses that came before me. You know, it's it's again, it's my job to take into account all of that and related to the planning justifications, which I have already put on the record.
Okay, okay. And then another question. I was told that there was, first of all, there's been activity at the site for, you know, quite some time. There was a, you know, there was a daycare that was being operated. And there was an instance where, you know, either it was either pickup time or drop off time or cars were just parked on Baldwin Terrace, you know. Because of that, it actually prevented an emergency vehicle from driving up Baldwin Terrace. I believe a fire truck could not, you know, pass through. Are you aware that such an incident occurred?
No.
Okay. And my 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 last question is about this, you know, purported entryway for emergency vehicles only. You said there's some kind of chain mechanism where if an emergency vehicle drives over it, it will it it can do so without damaging it and it could access the property if needed. Is that correct?
That was not part of my testimony. I think that was something that was testified to at the last hearing and maybe repeated by counsel this year.
Okay, well, are you aware of, I mean, is it easy? And this is in that entryway is supposed to be policed by somebody at the at the High Center who presumably will also need a parking spot, but that's sort of aside the point. I mean, would it be easy for that individual to just take the chain off and let congregants through if, you know, if it's raining or if somebody's in a hurry? I mean, is this something that, you know, it just, you know, I think there's probably concern that, you know, if this is if it's sort of easy to do that, you know, people would start doing it just as a matter of convenience, which is sort of goes against you know, this kind of idea that you're trying to sell that, you know, Baldwin Terrace is going to be closed to sort of regular regular traffic to the to the house of worship. And so is it, you know, do you do you know whether it's possible for, you know, somebody at the High I started to just operate it in the way that I just described so that they would be able to just kind of let people through at their own discretion?
Well, I think it's it's important for the record to reflect the fact that there is no particular reason based on the geometry and layout of the site that that access from Baldwin is any more convenient than vehicular access from Melbourne Avenue. Melbourne Avenue is the more heavily trafficked roadway that these vehicles are likely coming from. So I would based on my, I guess, professional planning testimony would be that it's no more convenient for vehicles to traverse Baldwin than it would be for vehicles to traverse Melbourne. And to your question of would it be, would somebody be able to lift that chain? I think the answer is yes, but I think the testimony on the record is that that will not happen. So I think that.
But that would be at the discretion of whoever happens to be manning the the gate. Is that? Yeah. Control of whoever's, yeah, okay.
It would be under the control of whoever's in charge of that facility, but if it's also on the record that that will not happen and cannot happen, there is certain stipulations that the that this board can hook to to an approval, such as that vehicles cannot use that driveway for any reason other than an emergency.
Any other questions?
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have no further questions. Thanks, thank you.
Next, we bring back Mr. Lama.
Thank you for having me back. First, I'd like to say my wife just reminded me that we moved into our house 24 years ago today. Congratulations to us. My question, you mentioned that the house of worship is going to be a small house of worship in your testimony. And this is completely from point of view of ignorance. What is to stop someone or the your client from selling the property and someone else establishing a large house of worship on the site?
They would need to come back before this board and seek approvals for for that.
Or increasing the capacity?
Exactly. Yeah, they they as of right, they would not be allowed to expand the building further than what has been approved by this board if an approval is, of course.
And all the stipulations about parking and all that follows the property?
If there's a stipulation on on parking, I guess, would depend on how that stipulation is worded. That would be but that's a legal question. So if counsel disagrees, just.
Certainly, Mr. Simon can can chime in, but as a legal matter, any approval runs with the land. It's not personal or unique to the to the applicant. It runs with the land. So all the stipulations, all the conditions, the maximum permitted size could not be not be changed by a subsequent owner without, as Matt mentioned, additional relief from this board and a new application.
So my my follow-up question is, any particular conditions placed on, not conditions, but circumstances that this house of worship has because of its nature either being Orthodox or not Orthodox or High Center, all of that would go away and you would have other conditions, other specificities related to that religion, XYZ religion, that might be different. Let's say more people walking or or fewer people walking or a different schedule. You or would not have any control over any of those. Is that correct?
Over the the type of religion that is practiced in this facility? Is that the question?
Correct. There was testimony that because of the nature of clientele of this particular client of your of your client of this house of worship, because of their clientele, certain things would not happen or different because of that. That was testified to. But if XYZ religion takes over this property, all of that is evaporates because of the nature of the new religion, XYZ.
I'm not sure of the testimony that I put on the record regarding activities. I'm not sure of the testimony that I put on the record regarding uh activities. Of a specific religion.
Simon, you were gonna.
I- i- yeah, I mean, I think we're getting a little far afield, but I think the 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 point is, is that. If there was a new occupier of the site. They would certainly at a minimum have to come back to the board. Likely for some form of site plan approval. If the site is different or the operation is different or the representations that a board based any. Affirmative decision on an application on were changed.
Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you, uh, thanks to go back to Sergey.
Just one follow-up question based on uh some of the discussion and some of the testimony from uh Mr. Flynn. Uh, so recognizing that uh you're seeking relief to variance and stating. That this is a small house of worship, I think we have to uh. Agree to disagree as to whether hundred thirty seat uh. House of Worship is a small house of worship, uh, but uh, from what I gather, one of your arguments as a. Uh, planning expert is that. My high traffic times would be limited to high holidays and weekend services, is that correct?
Are you asking if high traffic will not be correlated to high holidays? Was that, I'm sorry?
I'm asking whether the high traffic is going to be correlated to the high holidays. And to presumably Saturday or weekend services, is that correct?
I I don't know, actually, I I don't have any expertise into the operation, that that testimony was already put on the record by the rabbi himself, I.
Okay, but but as a planning expert, presumably you. Uh, have considered the impact on the neighborhood at maximum uh capacity of this. Uh, of the center, so uh, if I could ask you, when uh, given the concerns you've heard from. Leslie, Pretty and other residents of Bodwell Terrace about uh the number of children playing on the street. Uh, in your opinion, when would you expect to have the most uh children out and about?
If you're able to answer that, ma'am.
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, recognizing your youthful age, I understand that you may or may not have children, but when would you? Uh, think most children are out and about?
I don't know, I don't have any.
That's outside his scope of testimony.
Well, I remember testimony uh earlier was that uh this center is a religious entity can peacefully coexist with the neighborhood. Uh, which I don't want to argue about, but I think uh one of the previous concerns was. Increased traffic through this uh entrance on Bodwell Terrace. So my argument is uh, and my question uh to a planning expertise is whether. It was sufficiently considered that actually the. Times of service, the times of high holidays, which is when the school is off. Saturday service, which is when the school is off, is exactly when you correlate with the highest activity by the twenty-plus children. Uh, that are residing on the small Benham Street. Whether this was taken into consideration?
No, I don't have any expertise in Jewish holidays. I'm not sure if, quite honestly, I could. I could see if a Jewish holiday required their uh. People to stay at home. I don't know if it necessarily correlates to more people at the site. I just don't know. I think that testimony was already put on the record. Um, and I don't want to contradict that either.
Do you have other questions, Sergey?
Uh, none, it was fine, thank you.
Thank you, uh, going back to Pretty again.
Hi again. Uh, I was just reflecting to my previous question and may I ask Mr. Flynn that rather before that. When he was giving a testimony, he has mentioned uh Sika balancing test many times. So I was just trying to understand how my question was not in the preview, like, you know, where I was talking about. The kids' well-being. Part and how it was detrimental to Sika, because he has mentioned Sika balancing test too many times in his testimonial. And again, I'm also piggybacking with Sergey that. You're consistently saying that you don't know about Jewish holidays, but don't you think, considering that you are representing the House of Worship? You should be aware of these things. And bring it on the table about what are your solutions to these kind of problems, considering that you're proposing such a big project. In a such a tight space.
I mean. Ma'am, I'm I'm under oath and my testimony has to be limited to my professional expertise. If I'm not an expert in something, it's it's putting my license on the line to testify to it, so. Even if I know a little bit about Jewish holidays, I'm not going to risk anything by putting testimony on. Regarding Jewish holidays that I am not an expert in. In terms of the Sika balancing test, that that's the test that I have to apply to this application. Um, simply by virtue of the 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 specific type of variances that are being requested. The Sika balancing test is the test that has to be applied, so. I'm not referencing that test uh on a whim or for any other reason other than the fact that that's the applicable test in this case.
Do you have to apply Sika balancing test selectively? Because Mr. Simon has explained that the second point is whether it's detrimental or not, so.
So that's going to look at this specific site and the specific proposal. And my testimony was in re- in regards to the specific proposal that's before the board tonight. Um, and it took into account the the specific variances that are being sought.
And the third question is, I know you had been repeatedly telling each one of us that. The cars will not come, the people will not come. Who is going to be responsible? When that happens? Who is taking that responsibility when people do what they're not supposed to do?
Well, ma'am, the the testimony is that, and again, this came from the rabbi, that to the extent that there are issues with overcrowding or. An excess parking demand over what the twenty-five onsite spaces can provide. That they will be responsible for providing alternative parking, either valet-style parking at uh St. Rose. Or uh, working with a high school to uh, which is was correctly pointed out earlier and was part of our testimony. Typically, when the a- a days of greatest demand for the High Center will would be during the high Jewish holidays, when, as was pointed out, the schools are not in session.
My question is, what happens?
That they would take responsibility for that in the in those specific ways.
My question is, what happens when the responsibility is not followed, when this is not followed? What happens then? Because we are, I'm I'm not finished there, I'm sorry. Because we are working on a very limited, very, very, very limited area. And we are taking ways too many risks. And it is extremely critical that it is followed, and it is highly possible that it will not be followed. What happens then?
Okay, is it, this has to be a question for the witnesses, is that this, is this your question to the Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, you understand the question?
Yes, and if there's a stipulation on the record regarding what the applicant can and cannot do on the property. There is a uh, a legal responsibility of the applicant to do just that, and if he fails to do so, there is uh. There are repercussions that the town uh can take.
May I ask?
In the town, are there enforcement officers in the town that can take action if there's a violation of an approved site plan and a zoning approval?
So is it written on the paper? I'm not an attorney. So I need to understand, is it written on the paper? I need, I need to understand more.
It's not written anywhere yet. It would be a condition of any approval that this board was to grant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So give them more handout, uh, once again, Mr. Hasdusik.
Uh, hi, thank you for humoring me again. Um, I I I actually just have a couple of uh. Clarifying questions about the uh, the maximum capacity now. You said it was, it it was one hundred and thirty-six. Now, is that, did you say that was the number of seats? Uh, in the congregation?
Yes.
Correct, I just, I want, for clarification purposes, man, it. Hundred thirty-six seats in the sanctuary is shown on the site plan, right? Not not the population of the congregation.
Correct.
Okay, is that the same thing? Is that the same thing as maximum capacity?
No.
Okay, so what is the actual maximum capacity? I mean, there's, isn't it like a fire code or something that? Stays like clearly?
Mr. Flynn, are you familiar with the building's maximum capacity or not?
That's a question for the architect, um, I don't want to, again, I don't want to contradict any prior testimony.
Next question.
Oh, okay, uh, so is, oh, okay, so. Hundred thirty-six is the number of seats in the congregation now, is there, you know, i- i- is there some kind of like childcare basement, uh? You know, that that occurs during a service, um, like in many houses of worship? Is there like a kitchen where people could be preparing food or, I mean, how many more, there there's?
Sorry to interrupt, but this has been covered already. So.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we covered this already in prior testimony with the rabbi along with um, some of the other professionals. So do you have any questions regarding Mr. Flynn's testimony this evening?
Okay. Uh, no, no, my question. It was about the the capacity of the building, thank you.
Okay.
So I I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it looks like no more hands are up. So um, lastly, any questions from the board for Mr. Flynn while he's here? I see none, so, Mr. Levine. How would you like to proceed from here?
Um, well, I think. There were a couple of lines of inquiry that are clearly important, either to some members of the board or certainly some of our neighbors and member of the public. Members of the public that I think we could uh provide information with respect to and testify with respect to, probably not through Ms. Well. Not tonight, Miss, either Mr. Flynn or the rabbi would have to do additional um. Research, which I know they're more than happy to do and would provide that that requested information, um. Proceed, really, I think, short of any supplemental witness testimony, we're at the point where the public has an opportunity to make their statements and then I would close. And the board would would deliberate and vote. Uh, given the hour, uh, and the fact that I think there are, you know, not a ton, I don't anticipate, certainly I don't anticipate new witnesses and I don't anticipate. Extensive supplemental testimony, but I think there are a couple of lines of inquiry here that we would like to address just for purposes of a full record, so. What I would like to do is ask um. To be uh carried to at least one more hearing, um, I don't know what the board's uh schedule uh is and how backed up they are. Um, we did initially, you know, seek a request for the possibility of a special meeting. I know, Mr. Chairman, you correctly pointed out that you folks are volunteers. And already spend a good amount of time, we certainly are sensitive to that, but that o- offer remains, uh, if the board is is so inclined, and if not. We'd just like to be scheduled to your next available meeting to kind of tie up those couple of loose ends and. Have that happen early enough in the evening so that folks can make their statements and we could sum up and conclude.
Eileen, when is the next time that this case could appropriately be heard?
October, we only have. One meeting where we're hearing applications, it's already been scheduled, the first first meeting in November has been scheduled, probably the earliest we could hear them would be, um. I think it's the seventeenth of November.
How many cases do you have for that evening so far?
I think I have two.
Two?
Yeah.
Well, if you keep that limited to two, I think you should have sufficient time, Mr. Levine, to get your point across.
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chairman.
What's 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 the date?
That would be the twenty-first.
Of November?
Yes.
Do you need to check with anyone first, or are you okay? Mr. Levine?
We will make certain that we have the uh, the people there necessary, unless, let me just um. Rabbi, I know that you're monitoring the proceedings, let me know either by. Text or phone or maybe just chiming in on the Zoom here, if there are any. Religious holidays that conflict with that date that would prohibit you from attending.
Um, Craig and Rob, I just want, I I will definitively be out of the country November. November twenty-first, I will not be in the country. I don't know if that matters, but as one of the seven. Uh, people voting on this matter, it it might.
Well, well, yeah, that's wrong.
No, Craig, it's all you.
So, you know, there are people on this board that can get up to date on this, um, that can watch. You know what's going on and and, you know, that's why we have alternates, so it shouldn't be.
I just wanted to let you guys know.
But but I think to to Craig's point, um, to the extent that. Any of the remaining board members have not yet, you know, caught up in terms of reviewing the trans, any transcript, you know. Watching the Zoom hearings, um, I I respectfully ask that they do so, or or let. Eileen know if there's a problem with that.
I I just also, I have one thing to add, um, just as the liaison, you know, between the board and the HPC. I know that everyone was sent um, the documents, just, you know, kind of in the. Early afternoon today, um, from Burton Ross. Um, and you're, you should all probably be aware that we had a meeting last week where the HPC made some recommendations. Um, Craig and Rob, I don't know your thoughts, like, if if any board members. Um, you know, might might have questions, um, to to perhaps, you know, have the rabbi available. Maybe the architect available for the next meeting, if it's going to potentially be the final meeting, so that um, board members. Might be able to ask, like, I know Graham today tried to ask Mr. Flynn, um, if he was aware, you know, of it and and he wasn't. So I don't know exactly who would be the right person to ask, but I think that, you know, the board should have the opportunity to. Um, ask any questions based on reading those reports that we received today.
I would agree, you know, those reports were sent around very, I would consider late today, so I don't, I don't expect any board members to be well-versed in it. So I think at that time, that meeting would be appropriate to have um, a statement. Whether, whether by you, Jessica, that is our liaison, or having the chair of the HPC here to. Um, to to bring us up to speed on that as well.
Okay.
And Mr. and Mr. Levine, it would be okay for you to have your architect here or bring your whole. Bevy of professionals so that we don't have these holes in the testimony?
Yes, um, so the rabbis confirmed that they uh will be available, uh, we will be able to have, um. You know, certainly the the planning testimony there, I just, you know, I haven't, I need to confirm with Mike Bama and Dan, but. Um, you know, they've they've bent over backwards to make themselves uh available, and if I let them, reach out to them tomorrow, hopefully it's far enough in advance. That they can try to kind of hold that date.
Okay, then uh, we will address the HPC's concerns as well.
Yes, Mr. Levine, I know you gave it, I just received your extension of time.
Another one now, I I will grant that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that that'll be through when?
Uh, as I've, as I've been doing throughout, it would be through the end of the month that the hearing is held in. You know, so it doesn't expire like, you know, twelve oh one midnight or something like that the following day.
That's why I was asking, thanks.
Very well.
Chairman, and maybe this is a function of Zoom, I don't know, but I've been doing this a long time, and I think this is the first time ever when a chairman said we're going to take a five-minute break. It was in fact. Chairman, and maybe this is a function of Zoom. I don't know, but I've been doing this a long time, and I think this is the first time ever when Chairman said we're going to take a five minute break. It was in fact, five minutes on the dot. So that's a remarkable achievement. I do thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm I'm a punctual guy. So, Wolf, sorry, you have to plant your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just had a question for for Mr. Simon. Just since, you know, I assume that in November, we're going to be most likely voting on something. We'll be at that point. And in terms of how we as board members should be framing this in our minds, I mean, we still do have the first step here is res judicata. Is that correct? To establish that this is something that we should actually.
I I believe, yeah, I believe it is appropriate once all the testimony is in, and I think Mr. Levine accurately stated what the board decided was when the question first arose that we that the board would hear all the testimony um, from everyone before giving, making a decision with regard to rest judicata collateral estoppel. So I think that the way it's going to proceed at this point, and Mr. Levine can correct me, is that the applicant's going to come back in November with some additional testimony. What it is, we don't know. And then at that point, and then there'll be opportunity for cross examination of any witness or witnesses that provide that testimony on behalf of the applicant. And then it is up to the public, if they so choose to present evidence, they could present witnesses, make statements, whatever the the public chooses to do. And then after that, I I would recommend to give Mr. Levine, and 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 by the way, even before we get to summations, uh, Mr. Levine's client would have the opportunity to present any rebuttal case that they may want to present based on what the public states or presents. And then after that, Mr. Levine would probably make a closing statement or summary of the case, at which time I would then provide some instruction to the board in terms of the legal standards. And we would probably handle rest judicata collateral estoppel first.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Levine, does that sound like a plan?
It does. Yes, Mr. Simon.
Excellent. Um, so with that, once there's anything other matters pending this board that is not on the agenda this evening.
You want to actually, I mean, actually carry it? You want to just announce that?
Oh, so, yeah, so for those of you in the public, you see there's still twenty seven attendees. This this meeting on this particular applicant will be held on November, what was it again here, November nineteenth? So there'll be no further notice. Sorry, November twenty first. No further notice. Go ahead, Rob.
No, 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 I I was just calling. I should have just called the thirty second timeout just to make sure we got the right date.
Right, yeah, so November twenty first, no further notice will be given. So please keep an eye on the website. Everything will be there with our agenda. And that's going to finish. So anybody else, anything that's not on the agenda this evening that they'd like to discuss?
Just want to ask real quick, is there a tentative date for when we go back in person?
Well, I was hoping by then, but we can't. So it's probably going to be the first year. That would be my guess. If we go back sooner, that'd be great, but you know.
You want to, and we certainly could. I know that we're announcing this is being carried. It's going to Zoom. We could potentially just say, pardon the pass, we'll go back December. I think our first meeting is December, I think December fifth. Whatever our first meeting, whether.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you don't have noticed issues with current applications, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So let's shoot for that, assuming there's not another strain of COVID that shows up. But again, the president said COVID is over today, so I guess we're good to go. So.
I'm good for ninety days, so I'm.
All right, great. Any, he also, otherwise, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second, Steve, and thank you all for attending this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.